The time is 7:30. I call the June 3 meeting of Yardley Borough Council to order. Please stand for the fudge to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and with liberty and justice for all. And may the little ones lead us into the future. I love that. Thank you. Roll call please Patty.
Mr. Feiner.
Present.
Mr. Applebaum. Ms. Segal-Morris.
Present.
Mr. Stumpf.
Present.
Mr. Carlson.
Present.
And Ms. Sherr.
Present.
Ms. Thompson.
Present. With five members in person and one member electronically, we have a quorum of council. We'll move on to our first order of business, which is... Where do I sit on here? Am I looking at the old agenda? Consideration of hiring of a part-time police officer. Sergeant Golden, please.
Thank you, Madam President. Yardley Borough was served by dedicated police officers who provide police services on various shifts 24/7 and play a vital role in the efficient and effective delivery of services to the borough.
Oh, can you have him... Sorry. Start over.
I can.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Yardley Borough was served by dedicated police officers who provide police services on various shifts 24/7 and play a vital role in the efficient and effective delivery of services to the borough. We currently have vacancies for three part-time police officers. Myself reviewed the application of a Mr. Joseph Calorio. The applicant was then interviewed by then Chief Kelly and Manager Johnson, and then presented to the Public Safety Committee. The panels who interviewed the applicant were satisfied with candidate's knowledge, skills, background, and abilities. It is recommended to the council that we hire Joseph Calorio as a part-time police officer with the Yardley Borough Police. It is understood that this officer of employment was made upon the candidate passing all the required examinations and all other MOPAC eligibility requirements, which I have received just a couple days ago. I respectfully request council to consider a motion for Yardley Borough to extend a part-time police position to Joseph Calorio as a part-time police officer.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to that effect? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Councilperson Segal-Morris, seconded by Councilperson Feiner. Any discussion from council? Any discussion from the public? Hearing none? I'll pause for a moment. Just because I want this to be unanimous, so we'll wait here.
Aye, or something?
All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations.
All right, Joseph, come on up.
I'm sorry, I wasn't able to make it through the way. But I'm real sorry. So, good evening, everyone, friends and family. My name is Chris Harding. I'm there here in Yardley Borough. I'm going to be swearing again this evening. And for family, I guess, right? Okay, good, good. I just want to let you know that we do not take lightly the commitment that Joseph has put to make to the borough. We understand the dangers and risks that come along with policing, and Yardley Borough and the entire community appreciates the service and dedication you're about to perform. So, thank you very much, I appreciate it. So, if you'd like to please raise your right hand and repeat after me, we'll get you sworn in. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of this commonwealth.
The Constitution of this commonwealth.
And I will uphold the laws and ordinances.
And I will uphold the laws and ordinances.
Of the borough of Yardley.
Of the borough and order.
And I will discharge the duties.
And I will discharge the duties.
Of a non-civil service police officer.
Of a non-civil service police officer.
Of the borough... That's okay. Of the borough of Yardley.
Of the borough of Yardley.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
And to the best of my judgment.
And to the best of my judgment.
And ability.
And ability.
Welcome to Yardley Borough, please, Tom.
Thank you.
So, we have just a fun tradition that Sergeant Golden has decided to continue on. And for the first pinning of your badge, would you like to have someone special or someone special come up and do it? We're happy to do that. If someone would like to...
I would.
All right, Doc, come on up. Do you win. If anybody from the family wants to get a picture, come on up and we'll get out of the way. There you go. Does the whole family want to come up for a good picture?
Come on up.
Come on up. Now's the time. We got the time. Come on up, everybody. Jeff and Rich, you too. You have to get in there. That's okay. They came out to support. The good news is some seats will open up in a second. I'm sure. We've got lumber down here.
You all have wonderful families. What do you think of lumber?
I love it.
Everybody look at this one. This will be in the paper tomorrow. And here we go. One, two, three. Oh, that's wonderful. Ready. Congratulations, yep.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
I've heard some really good things. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Officer Clary. Chris Heine was a big representative. Where do we need this, Patty? Does it need to be like right here? Do we want to move the flags too?
Well, you can go downstairs. Yeah.
You're good. You're doing great. I never do well, so I'm not going to try.
It's my first time. I'm going to bust it up. Jerry, did you come over here with that one?
What's that?
Are you going to come back here? Will you put it in that corner? See, I said in this corner. I don't know what's in the... Just tilt it over. Take it two secs. Yep. Slide it back. You got the base? Yeah, it's on there. Oh, it is? There you go. Well, it's... Andrew's got it. Yes. Okay. All right. You know when people are watching you?
Yeah.
No, that one will just be a motion for conditional hire. Yeah, so I'll do that during my report. Thank you, council, for that. I appreciate it.
All right, folks, we're now going to be entering our business meeting proper. I'd ask that you all join me in a moment of silence, as has become our tradition when we lose a current or former volunteer of Yardley Borough. This evening, we're honoring in our moment of silence Barry Sherr, who, until the time of his death, served as treasurer of our sewer authority in Yardley Borough. Thank you. We'll move on to community announcements. This is the portion of the meeting where members of council and the public can share news about upcoming events happening in and around the borough. First, from the table, any community announcements this evening? Any community announcements from the public? Hearing none, we will move on to public comment. This is the portion of the meeting where members of public can address council about matters not on our agenda this evening. If you'd like a copy of the agenda, there's some up on the table up front. We ask that you keep your comments to three minutes per item. Any public comment this evening? Also, state your name and address, sorry. Yes, ma'am?
Sorry, I just... Why don't they all be here?
It is, yes.
Oh, okay. So, we'll be...
Awesome. Thank you.
Madam President.
Yes.
May I make a comment as a resident?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Sergeant Golden, I wanted to take an opportunity to thank you. As you know, two weeks ago today was when I nearly lost the door of my car, thanks to a young driver, and it may have been much worse. And I just want to thank you and the force for responding so quickly and professionally and, you know, making me feel comfortable in a situation where I was really scared and upset because it wasn't pretty and you should see the door. It was worse than me and my feelings. So, thank you and thanks for all that you and the force do.
Thank you for the kind words, Councilman. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other public comment this evening? Welcome, Dr. Pearl Mutter.
Hi. John Pearl Mutter. The council president's role is primarily procedural, to reside over these council meetings. You're not the boss of the other council members. You're not the boss of board and committee members, and you're not the CEO of Yardley Borough. It is not your job to personally evaluate Yardley Borough boards. You are supposed to facilitate discussion at council meetings and not shut it down. Manager Paula Johnson does not just report to you. She is supposed to report to the entire council. Manager Johnson is not a Yardley Borough police officer, is not the acting chief of police, and is not responsible for the administration of the police. Nowhere in the borough manager's job description does it grant her the authority to supervise the police, nor does she have the authority to direct the actions of any police officer. She can create serious legal issues between the police department union and Yardley Borough, which could result in another lawsuit. Council needs to remind the president and manager what their responsibilities are and what they are not. In your official capacity as council president, you did not have the authority to create the Yardley Borough Police Transition Committee on your own. You unilaterally appointed members of the committee and made yourself co-chair without a consensus or vote from council, without the authority to do so. Then you proceeded to hold two secret meetings of your new committee in violation of the Pennsylvania Sunshine Act. There were no minutes and no video of the meetings. On tonight's agenda, you listed the reaffirmation of formation of the Police Transition Committee and reaffirmation of committee appointments. There was no motion to create the committee. There was no vote. There was no affirmation. Therefore, there can be no reaffirmation. It was just you. You cannot reaffirm appointments or add members to a committee that does not exist because it was never properly created. If council allows this committee to go forward, you are rewarding bad behavior and setting a dangerous precedent. Do not be bullied by Thompson. She's not your boss. Although it has been almost three months since council was aware of the police chief resignation, you've not brought a motion to officially appoint an acting chief of police. It appears that currently there is no one legally in charge of our police department, and that also opens us up to serious litigation. Having Sergeant Golden performing these duties on a handshake puts him at legal risk and is not fair to him. If your political agenda is to dismantle the Yardley Borough Police Department, then make it public in this meeting right here and right now. If not, then don't waste everyone's time with a dog and pony show fake committee where you stack the deck with people who want to dismantle the police department. The gossiping, character assassination, and the entire whisper campaign is an obvious strategy to incite officers to quit, not to mention it's also mean and petty. You're playing games with people's lives, and our police officers deserve better. The only thing you need to do tonight is vote in an acting police chief. It is premature to set up any kind of police transition committee. Find out if residents even want to dismantle the police department. And if they do, then you pursue a comprehensive review by the state, not an ad hoc committee of handpicked residents with a political agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pearl Mutter. Any other... Yes, Mayor Harding.
I'd just like to put on the record, I think it's important, that I believe there were statements made as fact that were in fact in that presentation, and I also think that both you as council president and borough manager Paula Johnson are performing to the highest level, so I'd like to be on the record.
Hey, we don't sit up here because it's an easy job. We do it because we love our community, and Dr. Pearl Mutter is entitled to her opinion about me, as are all of you, and this is public comment, and anyone is allowed to say anything they want, and that's the beauty of this country. So, but I appreciate your comments, Mayor Harding. Any other public comment this evening?
Go ahead, Laurie.
Oh, well, two things. One is that I really appreciate the work of the Yardley Police Department. I appreciate the work of Sergeant Golden, in particular, in taking on the role of a chief even before he was officially, or has been officially, given that interim chief title. And I really support, I think, a 20-year job interview is about as good as you can get. I really, personally, I speak for myself, through seven of us here, support Sergeant Golden to be our next chief, and I hope that that's the direction it goes in. Regarding what Dr. Pearl Mutter mentioned, I think we have to be careful as a council. Things can look like corruption when they aren't, and it's our responsibility to make sure that we make sure, to make sure that we don't even create the appearance. So, it's not that it means that that's happening. That's for anyone to figure out, but the more transparent and objective a process we can make, the better. And when you look at the elevation committee that was chosen through an application process, I think that's the kind of process that would make the public feel more comfortable. So, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. And just for a procedural update on the... Dr. Pearl Mutter said you should vote tonight to appoint Sergeant Golden as chief. We are actively drafting a contract, which Sergeant Golden will have the opportunity to read and counter. It is not done yet. We can't vote on a contract that is not complete, but we have given our blessing to our solicitor to draft that, and we are moving as quickly as possible in that regard.
May I just ask or speak?
Sure.
Okay. Well, one question I have. You said that, and I didn't know, that there was a contract being drawn up. Is that for acting chief?
Yes.
Okay, all right. First of all, thank you, Dr. Pearl Mutter. I really appreciate things that you bring to council. I may not, as you know, always agree with you, but sometimes I see pearls, and I appreciate that. Secondly, people on this council know my position, and I wouldn't have said what I said about how much I appreciate what you did for me personally two weeks ago, but also for the... It's outstanding public relations that I have been hearing from people in the community, and I just wanted to let you know that you are appreciated, the force is appreciated, and how this comes, turns out, I will be very supportive of you and the force. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And council president, and Paul's not here, right? No. And Paula, if she was here, I want to say thank you very much for all your hard work because it's not easy, and sometimes it can get a bit contentious, but in the end, we're all here to work together and come together and decide on something that is best for the community. So, I do thank you. If Paul was here, I'd say it directly.
Yeah, so Manager Johnson is at an Association of Boroughs conference for a couple days, which we're excited to hear what she brings back to us. And I'm actually going to do something unconventional this evening, and Mr. Feiner, if you would chair the meeting for just a moment, I have a public comment.
Sure. She needs to step down. You state your name and address.
Hello, my name is Caroline Thompson, and I live at 1136 University Drive. Many of you are used to me sitting at that side of the table, and I come to you this evening as a member of the public to make a public comment and a proposal to Yardley Borough. My presentation this evening is about easements. Since the beginning of Yardley Borough, easements have existed as part of our town connectivity. They are extremely valuable, but also cost-effective and low maintenance. Easements typically require a willing property owner, but when one can be found, they always... They allow us to achieve things that don't feel within reach at the moment. As you all know, I think, I live in Sandy Run 2. It's a unique situation in that 190 of the homes in Sandy Run 2 are part of Lower Makefield Township, and I am one of 11 homes that is part of Yardley Borough. Beyond my backyard is woods, and those woods belong to the Yardley Walk HOA. But to situate people around where I live, I tell people, the big pink building where Calico Corners is, is in my backyard. So, Sandy Run 2, it has an HOA. We pay them $35 a year, and those monies are used to maintain open space and walking trails in our neighborhood, and that's an important piece of the storyline. Four years ago, my family moved to University Drive from the flats neighborhood over here in the borough, and at that time, we had a direct neighbor who I approached about blazing a path through the woods. They were not interested in having people behind our house, and that is a fear that I did not have and I do not have. As serendipity would have it, the house next door is under contract currently and will close in two days to a new family who has been searching for a home for a considerable amount of time, and their biggest requirement was walkability to Yardley. The buyers messaged me and asked if there was a trail behind our house into town. I said, "Sure, there is, if you're willing to lose some blood to the thorn bushes." Later, after they were under contract on the house, they sent me an odd portion of the seller's disclosure that indicates the $35 HOA is to maintain a trail into Yardley. No such trail exists, but it got me thinking about the requests I made to that first neighbor that I had four years ago. What if? What if my husband and I granted Yardley Borough an easement through our property to get folks from the sidewalk to the backwoods? What if Yardley Walk grants Yardley Borough an easement to get from the backwoods to the existing bridge over Afton Avenue? What if all of this could be accomplished in just a few short months with some sweat equity and the power of crowd-raising funding? What if? I want to emphatically state that a trail through the woods does not replace the sidewalk. It is a very different thing entirely, but I do think a trail through the woods is a solution that will get Yardley from where we are now, no sidewalk or safe path to Yardley, to where we need to be, a sidewalk in hopefully a few years. As we know, grant applications sometimes have to be submitted several times before we hit gold. I also think a trail would be a preferred route for some, including teenagers. So, I've prepared my thoughts in a presentation of sorts. I'm also happy to share these with anyone via email. So, I'm inviting the Public Works Committee and all of council to engage with me and my neighbors in Sandy Run 2 with the HOA of Sandy Run and with Yardley Walk, a project that I'm willing to lead. My husband and I are offering an easement of five to seven feet at no charge, of course, to the borough. My new neighbors moving in soon are very comfortable with this plan. In the presentation, you'll see two of our many easements that exist in the borough that help get our residents and visitors where they want to go, and I'm envisioning a path like the Yardley Walk Whiskey Hill easement in the first photo from the curb outside my house all the way to the backwoods, including the fencing, which my husband and I are open to donating and installing. The third slide shows about how long this path would be, approximately 200 feet from curb to woods, and then a total run from curb to west Afton of 450 feet, which is a minuscule distance of 0.08 miles. The terrain is gently sloped, and deer trails already exist. The largest lift will be right at Afton Avenue, where thorn bushes and brambles are about 10 feet thick. And then the final page is just some questions for you all to consider. I've already had some conversations with Sandy Run 2 HOA, as well as the Yardley Walk HOA, and some numbers about how we could crowd raise this funding. So, open to our partnership here and hoping that this is something that you all are interested in.
Thank you very much. May I... You can come here, I think. Just that there's... I guess I hand it back to you, so I'll ask if I can make a comment. There has been discussion about this going back a long time, various versions of what you're proposing. I give you huge thanks to taking those steps and your generosity and to wanting to make that happen. I think it would be amazing, and I encourage all of the people involved, Yardley Walk and elsewhere, to see that it's a benefit for everyone. Whatever... You know, whenever you talk about trails, there's always kind of like an initial, uh-oh, what about liability? What about safety? But trails have been proven time and time again to increase property values and not to present safety problems and actually improve safety because you have residents using them. So, I appreciate it very much, and I will do anything I can as Chair of Public Works to support you.
Do it. But as a member of the public, use my Gmail.
Yes, yes, correct.
All right, any other public comment this evening? Yes.
I made a picture of it.
Hi, I'm Raymond Hoffelder. I've been living in the borough for over 25 years. Before I bring up my issue, I want to say that I think we should keep the Yardley Police Force. Nobody in the borough I've talked to wants to get rid of it or merge with another borough. We like our police officers. We want to keep them here, and I don't think there's anybody in this room who would disagree with me.
Thank you.
Now, my issue is, this is something that's really upset me, and this actually involves you. You sent me this card last month asking me to vote for you, and I'm a registered Republican, and you only sent this card to registered Republicans. And there already was a suggested writing candidate, so this upset me because I felt like you were trying to take over Republican ballot. Why wouldn't you want competition?
I'm not sure that this is the appropriate place to talk about that.
This is appropriate because this affects me. This is personal to me. This is my name and address on here, from your address. So, I received this right a couple weeks before the primary election, and you were... The way it was written, you were... And I have copies for all the council, if you want a copy, in case you don't know about it. It was written like you were a Republican, and you said you had the support of Chris Harding, and he was supporting you.
Do I have the support of Chris Harding?
He does.
I am allowed to ask voters to write me in on any ballot that I want, and... I am allowed to ask voters to write me in on any ballot that I want, and Republicans did write me in. That is totally legal. It's allowable. It's called -- school board candidates do it officially, but not--
It might be legal, but it seems unethical. It's my comment period.
It's fine. I'm responding to you. You asked me a question, didn't you? Did you ask me a question? Would you like me to respond?
I talked to voters, and they thought that you were a Republican. Twenty people voted for you because they thought you were a Republican.
That's fine.
So that's deception.
I -- all my comment this evening is that letter was sent from my political committee. This is a Yardley Borough council meeting, has nothing to do with what we're doing tonight. I'm happy to have a comment.
It has everything to do, because you're a candidate for mayor. So you are already on the Democratic ballot, so why would you have to also want to have Republican -- be on the Republican ballot? So you have no competition.
I'm glad if they get more write-ins than me, which they did, by the way.
Now, four years ago, when Councilman Applebaum, he never sent cards to Republicans asking them to vote for him, he was ethical.
Okay. That's your opinion.
I just felt I was -- you were tempted to prevent me from having a choice as to who I can vote for in November.
Were you prevented from having a choice, sir?
You attempted to. You did take a write-away from other people who thought they were voting for a Republican.
If you don't research your candidates, I'm very clearly online, say that I'm a Democrat, so--
Well, I'm going to file a complaint with the Bucks County Election Commission. We'll see what happens.
Please do. I checked with them before I did the writing campaign.
Uh-huh, sure, yeah.
Any further comment this evening?
My last thing is, if -- okay, you're running for mayor, so basically the mayor has oversight over the police department, and it seems like from -- I've watched the previous meetings that you want to get rid of the police department, so why are you even running for mayor then?
That would be a great question. Why would I be running for mayor if I wanted to get rid of the police department? I don't want to get rid of the police department.
You're the one who's behind them, having this committee to merge with--
That's not what the committee is for. We're going to send a survey to every resident in the borough, and the borough's voice will be heard, and I encourage you to respond. I'm sorry that you feel that way, but that's just absolutely not true.
Anyway, I just thought that this was a personal assault on me, so I just wanted to -- I've never come to a meeting before, and I just wanted to say it because I've been living here 25 years, and I get along, I talk to everybody in the borough, and a lot of people were upset when they received this card. And most of them said they just threw it out, but I took it personally, so I don't know.
I'm sorry that your feelings were hurt, sir.
Thank you for listening. I'm in.
Sure. Any other public comment this evening? Yes, ma'am? Please come forward and state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Terri Greenland. I live at 75 West Afton, where the sidewalk ends, right there. Breeze, I'm on the next spot, Afton and Look Over Lane. So I took my life in my hands coming down here. After 46 years of doing it, I applaud a sidewalk, but I don't know if I'm involved in it. That's my question.
So we're discussing the sidewalk as part of the agenda this evening. Would it be all right if we waited to respond?
Yes, I thought that was part of your thing.
Oh, I was talking about an easement, not a sidewalk.
Okay. Okay, it's coming later. Okay, so just put me on for that.
Perfect. You'll be first.
Thank you.
Any other public comment this evening? Yes, ma'am?
Hi. It's my first time.
Don't be nervous. If you have to look away, that's okay.
I'm super nervous. I'm not good with public speaking. My name is Nama. I live on 107 West Afton, corner of Afton and Sandy Run. I actually wanted to talk about the speed limits. So we are part of the borough officially, but our speed limit is, because we're going down the cut on Afton, people go really, really fast, I think 40 miles, and the sign is actually after our house that it goes down to 25 miles, like the rest of the borough. And I was wondering, and I don't even know where to really begin with this, how it would be possible for us to be 25 miles like the rest of the borough, because I think that would probably be the first step for the sidewalk project, is probably just to get people to go much slower coming into the borough. So I don't know if it's maybe the police chief, or if it's engineering, or, but yeah, just a thought.
Yeah, it's a lengthy process. Sergeant Golden, do you want to speak to it?
So there should be, I do know, coming down from West Afton from the Lower Makefield Township jurisdiction, I believe, if not, I believe I saw a couple of days ago, it does say, "Speed ahead 25," sure.
Yes. That's at our house.
Sometimes that does get covered by brush or overgrown trees once in a while, so usually we'll have our road guy go out there and clip that.
I make sure that it's uncovered. The problem is, that's the 25 ahead sign is at our house, and then the 25 sign is already way past our house--
Yes.
-- when you're already well into the borough. So I'm wondering if the 25 ahead could be before the entrance to the borough, and then it could be 25 when you enter the borough.
So by statute, that sign warning that there's 25 ahead, okay, by law, legally, from that sign just giving that warning, by Pennsylvania statute under Title 75, we have 500 feet from that sign to 500 feet past that where we can begin enforcement. And that's where we have set up, if you ever noticed, on West Afton near Breeze. See those two strips there? That's where we use our timing device to clock the cars coming in from that point.
Okay.
That's a little bit over 500 feet. So, but we can't enforce it closer than 500 feet by state law.
In terms of doing a traffic study, though, to decrease the speed limit further up the road?
I think that would also have to be something that LMT would be involved in, since that's --
Yeah.
-- the speed limit is different than ours.
Yeah, it's complicated. The spot is complicated, and just for history, I think it's good to know Main Street on Yardley used to have a 35 mile per hour speed limit, and everybody said you couldn't lower it. Maybe, I wasn't here at the time, maybe you were here, and a woman, Margie Adams, who lives on my street, in North Main Street, pushed the governor and finally got the governor to come in and make it happen, and it happened. They lowered it to 25. The problem is that the differential in speed is from 40 to 25, and--
Totally.
To me, it seems the ideal solution would be to lower it to 25 at the top of the hill.
Yes.
So people aren't in ice and snow, trying to slow down on the way down.
Go so fast.
Maybe a case for that can be made, and I don't know if you have any experience with it, because it's a state road situation, right?
Yes.
But that's always going to be more complicated when you have a state road.
But is it that the whole borough should be the same speed limit, or is it, I would assume, being part of the borough, it would all be the same speed limit? So maybe just--
I think there is the opportunity to potentially look into relocating the signs--
Yeah.
-- and keeping them on borough property, potentially relocating them. I think we can talk about that and see if there's a way we can--
Yeah.
Moving something up a little bit more.
Yeah, because Breeze is a little bit higher than our house.
Yes.
So the University Road is past our house--
Right.
-- and University is part of the borough as well.
Yes.
Okay, but we can look into it.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other public comments this evening? All right, hearing none, we will close that portion of the meeting. Now we have before us consideration of the consent agenda dated June 3, 2025. It includes two items: approval of minutes dated May 20, 2025, and Resolution 25-06, P A D C E D capital project loan. Does any member of council wish to move an item? We might as well just vote on them separately, because I was not here on May 20, so I would abstain from that. So let's take them one at a time. Is there a motion to approve the minutes dated May 20?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Councilperson Siegel Morris, seconded by Councilperson Finer. Any discussion from council? Discussion from the public? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstentions? Aye. Motion carries 502. All right, next up, we have Resolution 25-06, P A D C E D capital project loan. So for the public's awareness, this was a loan application prepared in-house for replacement of our roof over the police department, which has been leaking for a number of years. We did a patch job on it last year, and now it's leaking again, so this is just a great opportunity to get a 2% and change loan to cover the costs of that repair. And this is not, we're not signing up for the loan, we're just applying to see if we get it at this time. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion was made by Councilperson Scherer, I believe, seconded by Councilperson Siegel Morris, even though I think, Dawn, it was the lag, but you didn't get it. Is there any discussion from council on this item?
Just a question, you had it fixed last year, and it's leaking again.
It was up to a 12-month patch job.
And it's been longer than 12 months.
Almost 12 months, but it wasn't guaranteed for 12 months. Any comments from the public on this? Any other comments from the public?
I would check with the company who fixed it and see what.
No.
No.
It was like a Band-Aid fix?
Band-Aid, yeah.
Very low cost.
It was, yeah.
It's a major problem. There's a lot of water. It needs a big repair, and they're getting water in the electronics room and the police department. It's dangerous.
It's not fair to them. Is there anyone with experience sitting under a leaky roof?
Maybe Sergeant Golden?
No, I mean, in the police station.
So, just to clarify as well, if you go back and watch the previous meetings, which I'm not necessarily recommending, because it would take a little bit to find it, we all knew very clearly that this was an emergency, temporary, I mean, you could even kind of put it in the same category as putting a blue tarp on the roof after a hurricane. Didn't, you know, it looked a little bit better than that, but we knew that we were going to have to do something else, long-term, that was going to cost 10 times more, and so this has given us time to get those quotes and to, really, we just kicked the can down the road a little bit so that Sergeant Golden wouldn't have a waterfall on his head and quit on us.
Any other comments from the public? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Next, you have a consideration of the finance report dated June 3, 2025. Any questions, comments, concerns? Otherwise, it will be accepted by consensus. All right, Sergeant Golden, do you have any other police report this evening besides the hiring of our new part-timer?
Yes, ma'am, actually, I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, honorable members of council. For the month of May, the police department answered 784 calls of service. We issued two parking tickets. We also conducted 111 traffic stops. Of those 111 traffic stops, 59 citations were issued. One other citation was issued for a non-traffic citation. We investigated 11 accidents, six arrests, with three of those arrests being for DUI. I also have something for you, as in a conditional offer motion for another part-time officer, if I can read that now, or do you want me to wait? So Yardley Borough was served by dedicated police officers who provide police services on various shifts, 24/7 a day, and play a vital role in the efficient and effective delivery of services to the borough. Now that we hired Joe, we currently have two vacancies for the part-time police officer position. Sergeant, myself, reviewed the application. The applicant was interviewed by myself and Manager Johnson, and then presented to public safety, where myself and public safety chair Siegel Morris interviewed the candidate. Candidate's name is Ian Barnes. He's local, from Morrisville. He currently works full-time for Temple University Police Department. The panels who interviewed the applicant were satisfied with the candidate's knowledge, skills, background, and abilities. It is recommended to council that we conditionally hire Ian Barnes as a part-time Yardley Borough police officer. It is understood that this officer of employment is conditional upon the candidate passing all the required examinations and all their MOPAC eligibility requirements. I respectfully request that council consider a motion for the Yardley Borough to extend a conditional offer to hire Ian Barnes as a part-time police officer pending certification from the Pennsylvania Municipal Police Officers Education and Training Commission.
Do I hear a motion to that effect? Is there a second? Motion was made by Councilperson Siegel Morris, seconded by Councilperson Scherer. Is there a discussion from council? Discussion from the public? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Madam President. That concludes my report, and if you don't mind, if you have any more questions for me, I can--
Sure, you're free to go.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, council.
Ms. Sergeant, do you have a manager's report?
Yes, thank you. The 2024 single audit is complete. Just let Manager Johnson or myself know if you'd like to see a copy of it. Again, the borough did well. Started to reach out to potential street captains, and we'll update you with the progress as it moves along. For the month of May, we had three write-to-nos, seven zoning applications, nine building permits, and zero zoning hearing board applications, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. All right, engineer's report, please.
Thank you. We've issued our engineer's report. Just to give an update to council for the North Main Street Phase 3 sidewalk project. When we last talked, we were in the PennDOT review cycle. On May 22, we received additional comments from PennDOT. These comments are minor. We updated our plans, responded to PennDOT yesterday. We anticipate the response, their 30-day response cycle is up on July 2. These comments are minor. What we're proposing, what we're doing at this time is we're advertising our project, and we're soliciting the bids. Our first advertisement date is June 5, and our second will be June 12. We'll be opening up the bids on July 26 at 10:00 a.m., and then what we hope to have is our recommendation to council on July 15, so we can just keep moving this process forward. As I've reported previously, PICO needs to move the gas service line, so we're just trying to move this process forward as the PICO gas service is going to take some time to relocate. So are there any questions regarding Phase 3?
Can we say hooray? Not really a question, but it's actually happening, which is great.
So I'll continue to coordinate with Manager Johnson as this process moves forward, so they'll be open, you know, in June. Are there any other questions for the engineer's report? Otherwise, we can move and just talk about West Afton.
Do you want to talk about the Arley grant?
Yeah, we could talk about the Arley grant. As we, you know, in prior council, we were authorized to submit to PennDOT to seek funding for various intersection upgrades, and during a council workshop, there were seven locations identified. We submitted the pre-scoping application. Late last week, we did receive a few comments. Earlier this week, I'm sorry, Monday, we did receive comments, and right now, their comments were vague. I shared with the Public Works and Manager Johnson some of the comments. What they would like to do is reduce the number of intersections and also have the borough consider a match as well. They did report that there was only one of the intersections that did have crash data, and so, you know, they're looking at the points of how they're rating it, so we just wanted to bring that up and decide, have a discussion on, are there any preferred that we would like to reduce, you know, those intersections, and if we would like to go for a match as well? Because in, during the public works, during our workshop meeting, we would hope to have the estimate prepared and have a resolution for that as well.
Let me just say a few things on that. So this is about improving our crosswalks in town, making it safer to cross the street, and upgrading some of our crosswalks to be safer to cross. And this is a red light, it's funded by Red Light Tickets, this particular grant. The engineer and I spoke about this today, actually, and he came up with a very good idea, which was, so what's happening here is the idea that maybe we need to scope this down a little bit to have a higher chance of getting the grant. Of course, they could also always do a partial reward, but it's a nice process with this grant, because they give you feedback as part of the application. So one idea, and I'd like to run this by council, is to remove the flashing beacon for the crossing coming down the hill of West Afton at where the cemetery is, and Breeze, right, and to make that flashing beacon crossing part of the West Afton sidewalk project, because that could be tacked on-- Because that could be tacked on as an extension to that sidewalk, a safety addition, because that's really the first crossing that would be along that stretch. And that would scope this project down. And then we'd want to get a sense from council if there's anything else they felt from the list of crosswalks that was kind of lower priority that they might want us to take out. The other thing I would say is that because we're generally limited to 10% of these grants being, or I think this one's 12% being engineering, we end up with an overage of engineering. And so we discussed the way that we structure the grant to list the overage as the borough's contribution. This way, it effectively shows them that there is a match. Now, whether we raise that money internally or through other sources, that's for the future. But in terms of how we apply for this grant, we want to list that out because that would be, from the perspective of this grant, if I understand that correctly, right, that would be our own contribution towards the work. So that would help us increase our chances of winning the grant. Any thoughts?
How many crosswalks are you talking about?
We're talking about crosswalks right now.
Sorry, how many crosswalks?
We have, if you want, I can go over the list of the ones we talked about upgrading. And these are anywhere from, well, we're talking about adding a new crosswalk at Yardley Commons. Personally, I think that's like a higher priority on this list. I think that's necessary because people at that end of town have no way to safely cross Main Street. So that would be my top choice, personally. We have Main at Reading, the idea of adding flashing beacons. So the idea is to add flashing beacons on the crosswalks that are in the perimeter coming into town where cars are slowing down. Then at Main at College, it's to redo that area and add, kind of redo the kind of red bricks that are there, like sort of street print bricks. And also to add a flashing beacon that can be potentially controlled by the fire department when they're using that intersection as well. And then it's West Afton at Breeze. It's, that's the one we just talked about, is taking that one out and making that part of the West Afton sidewalk. And then there is West Afton at Penn Valley. Over there, it is just, it's very minimal. It's basically just like updating the quality of the crosswalk.
Signage, right?
Signage, and, you know, there's certain, sort of, our crosswalks were all done at different times, it's an old borough, and new technology and new ways of doing them have come up that make cars more likely to slow down. So it's essentially bringing things up to a more modern standard. I hope that answered your question. Does anyone from council have any opinion on this? Because we could change things around, and then it's going to be in the next pack, in the next meeting, we'll vote on it. But we need to know what to work on in terms of setting that up.
You're just talking about crosswalks right now?
Right now, yes, the crosswalk grant. That's all we're talking about. And really, I think the big question, to make this simpler, is pulling out the idea of the Breeze crosswalk work and making that part of the West Afton project. Is that the main-
I don't think we decided to do the West Afton project.
We haven't yet, but if we do, yeah, yes, you are absolutely right, we haven't.
When you talk about it, it makes it sound like that we already-
Yes, no, we haven't. We've discussed that one, but we haven't decided on that one. But the idea is to take that one out of here and put it in there.
I could not, no offense, I couldn't hear well earlier. So what I thought I heard was there was a request from PennDOT to reduce the amount of crosswalks that we put forward.
Suggestion.
Suggestion.
Mm-hmm.
And your thought is, even though we haven't, that project has not been, you know, proposed or passed, but leave it for later. If, obviously, I hope that we'll be able to do the Afton sidewalk project, but if something got in the way of that, would we want to add that at a later date? Or how do you propose handling that? That, I think, based on your comments, would probably help with reducing people's speed because it's a visual-
Agreed.
You know, reminders like, oh, okay, I gotta slow down.
So what we could do maybe is, this is really just providing instructions to the engineer of what to drop. We're all going to vote on this at the next meeting. So what we could do is we could say, if it doesn't wind up in Afton, don't take it out. But if it winds up in the Afton, since that's coming up next, we decide to include it in that project, and that project passes, then take it out of this. If it doesn't, then leave it. But I'm just curious if council has anything else that they want to take out? Because it seems that we're being asked to scale this crosswalk grant application down a little bit.
We gotta finish talking as a council and then, before the public can comment. No, I think your logic on the committee has made a lot of sense here. So whatever your best judgment is on paring down, I think is fine, using the conversations we had at the working session as a guide on kind of what people were feeling about certain ones. But I think everything you said makes logical sense to me.
Okay, good. So we'll do that, and then it'll be up in two weeks.
Other comments from council? All right, going to the public, Dr. Promutter.
I had a couple suggestions, but do we want to make those in the meeting, or do we want to take it offline to-
Make them in the meeting.
So there's five intersections we're talking about here. And just to clarify, because I know it can get kind of confusing, there's only one actual crosswalk that's proposed as part of this grant that does not currently exist. And that is at Yardley Commons. There's absolutely nothing there.
Right.
To me, that's a non-negotiable. If we took everything out, we leave that one in there.
Agreed.
Then there's two sets of beacons at Main and Breeze, and I agree with the idea that that could potentially go into Afton. I'm good with that. Main and Reading beacons, I would put that as less priority than Yardley Commons, but I think in our conversations there with the engineer, I think that's an important intersection. The two I think I'd be willing to take out in addition to the Main and Breeze, like to just drop for right now, would be Main and College, which is just improvements to the existing because with the fire department there, I feel like you're more in town. There's people, people have actually stopped to let me cross there. Whereas like at Main and Reading, I've stood there, even with a sign that says, "Traffic must yield to pedestrians in Crosswalk." And I'm like, well, do I need to jump out in front of a car before they'll yield to me? And then Afton and Penn Valley, I cross that intersection all the time. That was a very minor, I mean, in all honesty, that's the equipment we wanted for that. We could probably-
We could just buy it, yeah.
So I would be willing to strike those two. And then, and also, because Main and College, that has the potential to get really complex with the fire department and tying in there. I don't want that to delay things. So I would say my priorities would be Yardley Commons for sure, and then Main and Reading, and then, and I would even rate Main and Reading higher than Main and Breeze, just because even if we don't vote yes on Afton today, we still have movement pushing for that, whereas we don't really have a lot of people coming in and advocating for Main and Reading. However, I've seen firsthand that it is a major problem there.
I have a question.
Thanks for your feedback.
Yep.
All of the crosswalks and all of that, where is that on the agenda?
To the engineers' report and the-
Oh, okay.
Yeah, because we voted to scope the project, we voted to approve it, and the first stage was scoping, and then we got feedback from the grant on what we scoped. And now, to do the final step, we need to adjust a little bit so that we are within the scope of what they want.
I think what Mr. Finer is looking for is guidance so that what he prepares for next council meeting is in line with kind of what council would vote for.
Yeah.
He's looking for feedback, right?
Can I add one thing? One of the comments from PennDOT is they do, they do look at crash history, and so they did recognize that of these locations, the only location that had a vehicle pet crash is West Afton and Penn Valley. So what they're looking at is really, it's, in some instances, it's, we've talked at it at length, is like, a crash has to happen to make it worthwhile, which we're trying to be more preventative here and make it safer for people. But like, right now, when a councilperson stomped you, you know, saying Penn Valley was last, that's one that they've recognized right here. So, you know, with that, you know, in mind, you know, we pull that out, maybe-
Wonder how this process works.
...will be a little bit lower as well.
Okay.
Yeah, so-
We need to keep that in there because someone's been hit.
Look, I think, I think the feedback is good, and then it'll come back to council. But the problem you highlight is very frustrating. It's a reactive system. It's kind of like, don't take vitamins, don't take care of your health until you're really sick, and then do an operation. You know, we-
Yeah. And then, also, as we've talked, is the, let's say, the signage and the striping improvements are really locked into a percentage. So that percentage is going up by us increasing the signal work, the rap, you know, the flashing beacons. So, you know, that's, that's the one element there, too. So if we reduce to zero beacons, we're really just have a, you know, we'll have to address that as well. So I think it's important, you know, for this application to think about that, so we could try to address all those intersections with, you know, the monies that are granted to us.
So to move it forward, just like your feedback was helpful, and if anyone else has like, feedback that disagrees with what Jared said, that would be helpful, too, just to kind of, to go back to the drawing board and organize this in terms of priority.
And I'll edit Penn Valley as my second highest priority now, after Yardley Commons, because I hear that that will help the grant overall. So I'm going to revise my opinion in light of new information.
And it's a very minor amount of work on that one, too, by the way.
That's what gets us the whole grant. So one thing I will say, just for the public and anybody watching at home, because I've talked to people around town that have told me, I talked to one person who told me she's been hit by a car twice, but she didn't report it to the police department because she didn't want to bother them. If you get hit by a vehicle, no matter how minor, please report it to the Yardley Borough Police Department, because that helps us in making our borough safer and cut down on future accidents. So please, if you, if you get hit, report it.
Yeah, don't jump out into the middle of the street. You don't need that level of help, but report it if you do get hit.
All right, we ready for public comment on this? Okay, Dr. Promutter.
The intersection of College Avenue and Main. First of all, replacing the brick is a total waste of money. You have dozens of 18-wheelers that are extremely heavy going to Ziamatic, going to the Tannery. It'll be cracked in one month. I know it's pretty, but unless they use something else, it's really just a waste of money. But I would like to advocate for something at College and Main, because I can't tell you how many times I'm trying to cross with my dogs, and people don't stop. They're whizzing by, and we also have kids going to the school, our only school, and that should factor in. And I don't know how far back they're going with those statistics, but I know for a fact there was bad accidents at that intersection. Somebody came down that hill and literally jackknifed a car. So I would check on those statistics and how far back they go. Also, of course, we have the kids on the bicycles that use that hill. If you've seen it, like, you wouldn't believe it. They just come down and try to turn real quick at the end. So anything, like, we used to have, I guess you call it the beacon in the middle of the street. It worked well, because nobody wants to mess up their car. And it's the only thing that ever slowed them down. So I just would like to advocate for a beacon at College and Main. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And also, just to, I know if you were here during our work session, but we talked about those little stands. So the problem, they are very effective, and the problem in the past is that the fire trucks, it's in the way of the fire trucks. However, what we discovered through best practices is that those stands can be placed, I believe it's up to 50 feet from where the crosswalk is. So if you move them back far enough, you can create enough space for the turn, but still warn the cars. So that's like the kind of practical thing that we're looking to do at the very minimum, because it's very inexpensive. But, you know, the creme de la creme level is the beacons. So we'll wind up somewhere between the two, I think.
Ma'am, did you, ma'am, in the front, would you like to make your comment? You raised your hand before, just checking, no? Okay. Any other comment on crosswalks? All right, hearing none.
Okay, well, there's no vote, right?
Nope.
Okay, so, West Afton?
Sure.
Okay. All right, well, our next item here is the sidewalk on West Afton. And since there's some new people here, I'll just give some background. This sidewalk would connect Yardley Borough at Breeze and West Afton up to Lower Makefield at, it's before, one block south, one block east of university. What street is that?
Sandy Run.
Well, for us, it's Sandy Run, but the eventual idea is to connect our, this is for the Yardley Borough portion, but for Lower Makefield to also do their little portion so that there be a continuous up to-
Schuler?
Schuler or Schuyler.
It's like the most controversial color to say it.
Yeah, that's probably why I mentally blocked it. Okay, so you have a lot of Yardley people who go up that way. You have got kids going up on bikes, on foot, whatever, using the library, the pool, the parks. And then you've got people coming down from that side who both live in the borough and live in Lower Makefield, going down to the Yardley, heart of Yardley retail. It's one of our most traveled corridors, and it's the final, I call it the final gap, the final key connection. So this has been worked on for a long time. There was work done, some way before I was on council on it. There was once a joint grant worked on by Lower Makefield and Yardley Borough. And sidewalks take a long time. When I moved here in 2011, there was a sidewalk coming in on North Main Street, that coming next year is supposed to be. Here we are in 2025, and it looks like this one, we might just get it in before the end of the year for the Phase III. So the reason I bring it up is because you have to think ahead, and this is really all about funding. They cost millions of dollars. And this particular grant that we're looking at is the DCED MTF grant. Normally, it has a 30% match. This year, that requirement is waived, so we don't have to provide a match. We have been very successful with this grant in the past. We funded most of the North Main Street sidewalk using this grant. And so this is, this is the best grant for this project that exists. The sidewalk also includes drainage, and when you have drainage, you have more water in the pipe. More water in the pipe means less erosion on the roads. We all know how that affects us. The Phase III of the North Main Street sidewalk, which we talked about earlier, the first grant came in in 2021. So it just gives you an idea of how you have to think ahead. Five, four, five years later, you get it done. So there's been conversation about, well, are we going to build a sidewalk to nowhere? In other words, is Yardley Borough going to build this, and then Lower Makefield won't do their part? So I spoke to, I went to the supervisors' meeting, and I also have spoken directly to people at Lower Makefield. They're interested in doing this project as well. They probably won't join this grant this round, only because they are applying for this grant for another project, which is the Taylorsville Road sidewalk, which they've already partially funded, and they are committed to building that no matter what. That wasn't on their outlook, kind of going back five or six years, but we had that huge flood in all the, in Maple Vale and all the drainage there, you know, it's not adequate. So that's why they've kind of moved that one ahead. But they're interested in doing this as well. And if you go back, and I put in our packet, actually, for the, I didn't, I didn't, I'm sorry, I don't have slides today, but in our, in our packet, I have the 2019 Lower Makefield Township Master Plan, and it shows the proposed connection there with Yardley Borough. So I, I am convinced this won't be a sidewalk to nowhere. They're going to build it. And I think because of the section being larger for Yardley, and because we may need a second grant, likely we'll need, this is one of probably two we'll need, it's going to take us some time to get this done. We don't, we don't have the kind of money we could just throw at a sidewalk, so we have to fund it. So this is really about funding it. Now, where does it fall under the Yardley priority, Yardley Borough priorities? So our comprehensive plan has contained this. Our most recent current comprehensive plan has in it, the North Main Street sidewalk and Dolington Extension, which is amazing to look at it, I'm happy to say. We even have the Dolington Extension mostly funded. So that's a little piece that goes from North Main Street Phase III to connect to the existing sidewalk in Lower Makefield and Dolington. So that part is really nearing completion. We have the pathways via Yardley Walk that was proposed back then is now complete. Even the Reading Avenue train station, part of that sidewalk was built by SEPTA for- part of that sidewalk was built by SEPTA for us. So really, the last remaining piece of this is the West Afton sidewalk, and it is in our comprehensive plan. I think it's time to actually, we have a chance now to actually do it. It is listed right here, bicycle pedestrian pathway linkages. The first item on the list, Afton Avenue connecting to the Lower Makefield Township Bike Way, this is a project currently being developed. This was written in 2014, jointly by the township and the borough. The next item is about North Main Street, which is nearing completion. And I have in our packet a rendering that was done from engineering work that was already done on this in 2014, that shows where the sidewalk would be. It shows how the five-foot sidewalk would exist along the road. And there was also a grant exercise back in December that President Thompson did with us, and in the rankings, we had traffic safety equipment flashers was first, building improvements to Borough Hall, which we just, we just worked on that now, Phase Two of North Main Street, Dolington, I think. Well, anyway, that's funded now. Fire hydrant adapter is very important, access to the waterfront, and Afton Avenue sidewalk was right after that. So it received ranking of six out of 19 items. So it seems like it's a higher priority from both planning and the existing council and, of course, the public. Finally, last year, this was on the agenda, and it did not pass because we were not budgeted for it. I don't know that we'll ever have a chance again for a no-match DCED MTF grant. It just looks like the way things are going, grants are getting smaller, and matches are getting higher. So I think it's a great opportunity. I think we have a high likelihood of approval. The cost is $6,900. It is in our budget. We budgeted for it this year. We have budgeted $28,400 for grant applications. So far, we've spent, or sorry, we have left $14,342. My final point, and this has to do with a very interesting question that was raised about abstentions and how projects benefit, whether we should be voting on something if it benefits us. And, for example, the North Main Street sidewalk, I live on North Main Street, North Main Street sidewalk, Mary Aldy Bridge benefit me. I vote on all those. Rich Wayne, who was on council for many years, voted for all those. John McCann, who was in the same neighborhood, voted for those. And, you know, whether, you know, if there's a crosswalk growing in your neighborhood, you know, can you vote for that? And it's very important because we all have to decide if there's a conflict of interest and if we need to abstain. So I asked for the solicitor for some guidance about it, because I think it is very important, and it was confusing to me, was I supposed to have abstained from all those votes? And the guidance was basically that, and I'll read it to you, but basically, the idea is if I was, let's say, next door to Judy's Garden, if that was my property, and we were voting to establish Judy's Garden, that directly affects me in a way that it doesn't affect anyone else, that's where, you know, there's a conflict of interest. But when you're doing something in your neighborhood that affects the general public and multiple people, that's not the same kind of standard. So what it said was, and these are parts of it, and, you know, I'm happy to send more if anyone wants it, but used by a public official of the authority of his office, I should say his or her, or any confidential information received through holding his public office for the private pursuantary benefit of himself, a member of his immediate family, or a business with which he is a member of his immediate family is associated. That's the definition of a conflict of interest. The term does not include an action having a de minimis economic impact or which affects to the same degree a class consisting of the general public or subclass consisting of an industry, occupation, or other group, which includes the public official or public employee, a member of his immediate family, or a business with which he or a member of his family is associated. So basically, the conclusion was, and I mentioned the hypothetical situation I mentioned to you, the portion of the sidewalk being voted upon only benefited a single council member, or was otherwise of such a limited public benefit that it had the appearance of only benefiting a single council member, then that council member should recuse themselves to avoid even the appearance of a conflict. So I hope that gives us on council some guidance as to whether we feel comfortable voting. I hope, and I hope that we could support this sidewalk. Thank you.
Any comments from council?
Oh, should I actually make a motion, right?
Sure, yeah.
So I mention, I make a motion to approve the application for grant for the West Afton sidewalk in the amount of $6,900.
Second?
Motion was made by Councilperson Finer and seconded by Councilperson Stone. Discussion from council?
Sure, if I may. First of all, Tori, I want to thank you for your dedication and well-researched, you know, that work that you provided here tonight. I know it's a conflict of interest because I'm on the same committee with you, just kidding. But.
Public Works.
But I'm proud to serve you and Jared. And the reason why I'm saying this is because when we talk about the comprehensive plan, which, what was that, 2014, and now it's 2025, what's the point of that comprehensive plan? Well, part of it, obviously, is to make improvements so that we live in a, you know, for the benefit of the residents and a better community. But another part of that, and I'd be remiss not to think about the, you know, as Chair of the Community Development and Economic, excuse me, where's my committee, I always get that messed up, economic impact of what that does for us, too, because it's more than just, there's some, a lot of indirect benefit of fulfilling the comprehensive plan. And so the fact that we are moving forward on a lot of these things, I can't see, is great because it not only fulfills the comprehensive plan, because what's the point of creating a comprehensive plan if you don't actually get the work done? So, but it also has that indirect impact that, you know, that it provides. And as you are aware, that this borough has seen a lot of improvement just by the fact that people want to live here and bring their businesses here. And, you know, I'm just happy that we're more than just, it's just more than lip service, but that we are moving forward and getting stuff done. So that's what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you for putting together all these materials, Councilperson Finer. I think, you know, I'm a big believer in planning, and we have talked about grants a lot in the last year as a council to try to get more organized around our applications. And I think it's accurate to state that a lot of people who didn't support this last year said that they would support if we budgeted for it. So we increased, I think, maybe three times or double our grant budget for this year, and we did that grant prioritization work, which you included, and it ranked, well, it's tied six, seven out of 19. And I think that's all important. As we, you know, as we move from month to month, we're not, we're not a council who works month to month. We have to be, have longer-term plans. And I would like to spend a couple minutes just talking about what else we would like to accomplish this year. So I think just saying we're doing the police roof is probably not enough to say check on the Borough Hall improvements. So the windows are in very much need of serious rehabbing, if not replacement. The bathrooms do not work in the building consistently. So I know that that's an LSA grant, I believe, that we had wanted to put together there, this grant, and then we prepared the DCED in-house. Was there anything else that we want to accomplish as a council this year that's in our prioritization higher than this? I just want to make sure everything's on the table here. So we have $14,000 left. Can we accomplish what we need to? That's my question.
I think.
Sorry, I have a question.
No questions at this point until public comment. Yeah, go ahead.
I think because this building needs so much, I would rather see the money used for a grant for that. Plus, I know right now, Lower Makefield is not interested in extending it, so we'll just put it there and it'll sit there, you know, without really being able to be complete and be effective, or we don't know how long. So I would rather see money spent on something that's going to really take this building and keep it from maybe dilapidating or, you know, you have to take care of, we have a lot of safety issues in this building, and I just think that we would, it would behoove us to really use money for that.
So I think the estimates on the LSA grant for the building were between $6,000 and $7,000 for this. Like, we could foreseeably do those, too. So my question is really, is there anything else this year?
The other things from my side, from my side and from the side of Public Works, are things like making, getting some movement on the Judy's Garden and the Yardley Borough Trailhead, but those are not things that we require spending any grant application money for. Those are in-house things. And some of that's, actually, some of that may even be from the community. So I agree with you. We do have an LSA grant that may come in in time for the roof. So if that doesn't come in, we've got this fund that we approved earlier today at this meeting. But if that does come in, maybe we could use that process to fund window improvements and any of those other items. So I don't see them as competition. And since we're talking about the sidewalk now, I will say that it is not going to be a sidewalk to nowhere. It's simply that Taylorsville Road created an emergency that moves the list of priorities. And there are other grants they can apply for that are not applicable for Taylorsville Road that could help with Afton. So it's, I'm sure that us thinking ahead and anticipating probably two grants to pay for it is time for them to catch up. It's just not going to be necessarily on the same application.
Councilperson Stone?
Yeah, so I would say also on that note, from my perspective, let's just say hypothetically, if Lower Makefield were never to complete their portion, which is about 20%, we would still have a sidewalk that takes Sandy Run Road. So what we've done there is, we've connected the sidewalk that ends between Breeze and Look Over to your house. We've made it to where you can walk around Look Over, and you're not going around a weird corner. If the easement thing goes through, there could be a connection to that somehow in the future. It goes to a few other houses on Afton Avenue within the borough, and then it goes to Sandy Run, which, people may not know this, but Sandy Run is split. The east side of Sandy Run is all Yardley Borough residents. One of them is here tonight. The west side is Lower Makefield residents. Oh, look, we have some of them even here tonight. Former Yardley Borough resident, but you defected to Lower Makefield. We'll forgive you since you came back. I just, I reject the notion that if we, if we build 80% of it, over 1,000 feet, but then there's a 200-foot gap, yeah, that's unfortunate, but we've still closed 80% of the gap. And so I think to call it a sidewalk to nowhere, this can has been kicked down the road for 10 years. And I think to call it a sidewalk to nowhere so we can keep kicking the can down the road, and that doesn't, Borough Hall's been neglected for longer than that, and that should have been planned better by previous councils. But I don't think we need to necessarily, I do understand it ranks higher in the list, but if we, if we go down the list of projects, the number one is traffic, safety, equipment, and flashers. One of those was the little things in the middle of the road. Those are $500. We can buy those without a grant. The flashing beacons, we've already applied for a grant for those. So that's done. Building improvements to Borough Hall, yes, we do need more than a roof, but we've taken care of the immediate. This is the, if it's a loan, we can use it for whatever we want, right? So we could use it for windows.
No, it's like, it's a special application. You have to apply for what you're using the money for.
Oh, I see.
We can apply for windows.
Throw windows in the mix. Phase Three, I think that should say Phase Three, not Phase Two, North Main, Dolington, we've applied for that grant. We almost have that fully funded. Fire hydrant adapters, do we remember what that is?
Is Mr. Forrick still here? Did he leave?
There is.
Can you, you didn't, what's not yours? The fire, the fire hydrant adapters?
Yeah, the fire hydrant adapters is a request to, as we change out fire hydrants, you have this adapted. It makes it quicker and easier for them to connect to it.
I see. I see. So, Mr. Carlson, is that something that we would necessarily apply for a grant for and then go around to every fire hydrant, or is it more of as we go with replacing? Or maybe Mr. Forrick can answer.
Well, so far, we're just doing it as a, but when we do prioritization.
Okay.
Remember, we went through and ranked all these in December.
Yep, yep.
And we ranked that, that ended up being weighted ranked higher than doing the parcel Afton Avenue.
Right.
So that's.
Okay. No, absolutely, absolutely. I was just curious. And it's just a very, very slight. The other one is, is access to the waterfront in front of the annex and at the end of street cap. So where we have streets that intersect with Delaware Avenue in the borough, like Florence Fold, Brown, the borough actually owns that little 20 to 30-foot, that's the width of the street. Like, the other land, it's reprimand rights, it's those property owners. There's things that we could do to develop that property. That did rank slightly higher than the Afton Avenue sidewalk. We did that through a grant with Spearhead Projector. We've started that process.
Yes, and we got an additional grant this year from the American Water Charitable Foundation, and I can talk about that during my.
From a Public Works perspective.
Really what I'm saying is, is we have done all of these things that rank higher, except for the building improvements to Borough Hall, which we have in process, and the fire hydrant adapters. Now, we don't have a roomful of people here to talk about fire hydrant adapters. I'm not saying that doesn't mean that they're not important. It did rank slightly higher on the list. And by the way, I voted for the fire hydrant adapters. So I, maybe it's a conflict of interest because I have a fire hydrant in front of my house, but it was just recently replaced. So I guess my, my adapters are good. And then slightly after the afternoon sidewalk is redoing the barn. That's a, that's actually tied with the Afton Avenue sidewalk, but that's much more involved. That's a property that the borough owns. I'm not going to get into the, and then after that is Crosswalk Editions mid-block. That's in the grant. So we've actually gone down below the priority and started working on those things as well. And so I think the notion that we're just leapfrogging ahead to a pet project because we like it better is objectively false.
Thank you.
Can I make my comment?
Yes.
Yeah. And I'm going to apologize if you lose me. I'm going to lose internet connectivity sometime in the next 15 minutes. And I don't have a choice on that, unfortunately. A couple things I want to say. Number one, I'm very supportive of getting a sidewalk eventually up the University Drive and connect as we all want. But I think it's extremely important that LMT be on this with us. And they have given no indication that they have any stomach for it at this point in time. So that's, that's a problem. And I see a lot of engineering associated with this. And the water runoff coming down that hill, the engineering needs to be done together with both parties so that these two pieces come together. So I think that what we should do is we should try to convince LMT to put this on the table. And then if they do, I'd be supportive of them moving forward. If they won't put it on the table for now, then we should do the other priorities in our budget first. And one of the reasons I say that is because if we are successful with getting easements, et cetera, and doing the generous thing that Councilperson Thompson offered, you can really get, you can go across the crosswalk at Breeze and then walk through Calco Corners. It's very safe walking through their parking lot. Nobody's going to hit you in the car. You can get all the way to the bridge over the creek very safely today. And then if right, as soon as you get over the bridge of the creek, there's a path to University Drive, the lower end of University Drive, that addresses a significant portion of the people that I've heard from, or University Drive people, LMT and borough people, that addresses their walkability while LMT finishes their more important project down on.
Taylorsville.
Taylorsville, yeah, Taylorsville, sorry. Thank you. Finishes their Taylorsville. Now, if they, finishing their Taylorsville is one thing. I think that we should, and I would be willing to propose an amendment to this to say, to support going forward with our engineering, but not allow our engineering to start any work until LMT also signs off on it. So everybody who's in support of it today, go to LMT's meeting tomorrow night and convince them to go for it because they're the biggest, the biggest ones that benefit from this. And I think it's very important the engineering be done tomorrow, and together, or we're going to waste money in coming up with some plan just for our little piece.
Have a little piece. Have a little piece.
That's where I'm.
Can I speak to Don's point? Yes, thank you for your points, Don, and I think, I want to clarify here that this particular grant, which is such a great grant, because it's a 0% match and it goes to high numbers, is a very good grant for us, and the issue with LMT is that they don't want to cannibalize their other project that they have to get done, that they've already partially funded, by competing, and I understand that, they don't want to, you know, there have been cases where a municipality was awarded two different projects for this same grant, but it's hard to know, and I can understand why they wouldn't want to go on this one. It doesn't mean they wouldn't go on another one. So the idea is, we go for this grant, we get the funding, and it can wait, like, North Main Street sidewalk, phase three was 20, that one, the first grant came in 2021, here we are in 2025. So it's really about understanding there are multiple pieces that have to come together, and I, because I agree with you, of course it's better to do it with one engineer and all of that, but we're far from the point of building, we're really in the stage of funding, and if we don't move it forward, start funding this, we'll never get it funded. That's why I think it's, and this particular time, we may not have a no-match opportunity again. It doesn't even say, when you go to their website, a lot of people commented saying, hey, it says 30% match, it's only through emails that the engineer confirmed with the state that, no, it's waived this year. So they haven't even gone on to say 0%, that's how non-committal the 0% match.
We got an email from State Senator Sanisaro three weeks ago, said 30% match, so that would confuse me.
Yeah, I know, a lot of people were like, you know, so I just think you have to jump when the iron's hot, and the iron's hot.
I would like to speak to your, your lengthy comments around abstention, so as I stated during my public comment, I live on University Drive, I'm one of 11 homes on University Drive that are part of the borough, I have abstained on all votes regarding University Drive in the past, including a stormwater grant that we applied for, and I had, you know, a conversation with our solicitor last year, and it wasn't an official legal conversation, I was just like, hey, like, you know, I'm thinking, like, what do you think about this? And he said, yeah, I probably would abstain, and then I understand now that we've instructed him to look into it formally, which I can understand, you know, an opinion can change, and I haven't, you know, this is the first I'm hearing about this legal opinion that we received, but where I'm really confused is, at the beginning of the meeting, when we were talking about the Police Transition Committee, Mr. Feiner, you said a comment, like, we should strive for not even the appearance, not even the appearance of impropriety or corruption, or whatever you said, and then you said, the more objective a process, the best, and, you know, I know there's been a lot of assassination attempts on my character tonight, but at the end of the day, I do feel like I hold myself in a manner that's ethical in my dealings on council, and it confuses me when members of the public and members of this board pressure me to act, like, beyond ethically, in one instance, where there's not even an appearance of impropriety, but then in another case, call and text and ask our legal solicitor to draw up a legal opinion, that pressures, pressures me in a way that I feel is unethical. So I don't know if you have any response to that, but I'm just, I'm grappling with that, again, this is the first time I'm hearing it, I didn't receive the legal opinion, but at the end of the day, I have to be able to sleep at night and feel like, when I vote, I don't have a conflict of interest, and in this case, I absolutely do have a conflict of interest.
Would you like my response?
You don't have to respond, but you're willing.
No, I would be happy to respond. In the past, you've mentioned that you support this project.
I do, I absolutely do.
And I, and I believe you, and then you've had, said you've abstained because it personally benefited you, and I didn't really understand that, because I thought of other projects where we have things in our neighborhoods that benefit us. In this case, it actually doesn't go to your house, it goes to Sandy Run Road, so it's quite a, quite a distance from where your house is, as well as other borough residents. My view is, was that always that sidewalks benefit everyone, they don't benefit a particular person, it's not like a sidewalk to one house, and so I never really understood where the conflict was. I asked the solicitor, because I wanted to get a better understanding, because I was like, well, I voted for North Main Street, was I doing something I shouldn't have done? And then my predecessors did that as well, and there are other cases where things are in your neighborhood, how could we work as a council when something's in our neighborhood that affects us in some remote way? And so I got clarity on that, and I actually did send it to you, you may not have seen it, but I did send it to you. So I'm sorry, because I wanted you to hopefully see that. The Police Board is, I think, it's a very different thing, and I don't want to go into why that doesn't, that, why that's so different than this, because I think that has already been spoken about, but I really, I'd rather just keep it as a separate item.
Sure, and, you know, I, I did a lot of research on this, I wasn't just like, I don't want to get involved, I'm going to abstain, like, I looked at what other municipalities have done, including in Lower Makefield, there's been a supervisor who has been abstaining on sidewalk votes because it goes past her house, and she was, she received guidance from their solicitor not to vote on it, so if there are solicitors out there who are providing guidance that this is a conflict of interest, like, it's gray area, and then I'm being pressured to step into gray area because this one benefits something that you're putting on the agenda, and I'm, I'm just publicly stating that that makes me uncomfortable.
I'm sorry that you feel that there's pressure, I'm just wanting us to have clarity on when to abstain and when not to. Solicitor is there, and you, you know, you can ask him if he wants to, if you want to say something, you can.
I mean, look, I analyzed the question based upon the hypothetical that you provided me, there, there was a case that was directly on point with regard to this issue, and that's what I issued the opinion on, but if council as a whole is concerned that there may be a conflict here, you know, we could certainly table this issue to the next meeting, and I could take a look at it and discuss it with everybody, so that everyone feels comfortable.
Any other comments on this matter before we open the public comment? All right, public comment, folks?
Yes, sir.
All right, Mayor and Borough Council, my name's Chris Smiley, I am an LMT resident, actually was a resident of the borough for six years, and one of the things we missed when we moved to University Drive was the borough lifestyle, so now our kids are a bit older, and apologies, I have no planned, planned remarks, but, so Mayor Harding was our mortgage guy, I don't know if I can say that, for the house that got us into LMT, but that being said, our kids are older now, and, you know, son's 16, 15-year-old daughter and a 13-year-old daughter, they frequently want to go to the borough, it's either a car ride or a walk, so personally, I've walked to the borough twice in the last, like, two days, today with my daughters and a friend, and it is, like, we can either go the back way down Sandy Run and kind of around, or we can, you know, venture on Afton Avenue, and I think, I think the sidewalk project is a huge benefit to the borough, especially when you consider too, that LMT, I believe that there's a couple new neighborhoods coming up by 95, right, at the Cambria Stables and across, across 95, right, so considering the parking situation in the borough as well, I would think, as a council, you guys would probably want more foot traffic. Once we get in the car, we consider going to Newtown and other places, I think it's, we enjoy the borough, like, we miss the borough lifestyle, so it's kind of twofold, where it's a safety thing for the kids, but I think also, as we, you know, or I'm speaking like a borough resident, but as the borough is competing against Newtown and Picketts Preserve and all these places with other options, it makes sense to open the doors and allow people to walk into the borough, and kids to go to the Ice House and, and Pan and all these other great places, so I will, I'm actually going to go to the LMT meeting tomorrow night and, and leave a public comment, but thank you for hearing me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Hi. I wrote my stuff down this time. Okay, so I'm Hannah Shock, I live on Sandy Run, right near where it intersects with Afton. We used to be in the borough, and now we're in LMT. We also miss that walkability thing, and I totally thought, oh, we're so close, we're right there on Afton, we can just walk into town. Yeah, not that safe, really dangerous, and so my kids are here, they're 10 and 8, Nola, and that's her bestie Lily next to her, and then Henry had to go for a walk because he's been sitting still too long. So anyway, Nola's bestie lives on Breeze, and they're getting older, they're 10, they're going to want to go to each other's houses and be kids and go into town, and they can't do that without risking life and limb right now. So wait, I didn't even get to my, okay, so please, guys, please put this through, I mean, there's zero-dollar matching, like, now is the time. If we can get the pre-work done now, and best-case scenario, we get this, and then we don't have to pay anything, $6,000 for, you know, an application to submit it, best-case scenario, then there's no matching grant, and this is fully funded and it's done. Worst-case scenario, we don't get it, but the money is spent, the work is done, and we can just keep applying in the future, and then find the matching part somewhere else. But I really feel like the time is now, and I was canvassing the neighborhood, and I ran into one of your neighbors yesterday, and she was like, this is, this is a no-brainer, we really need to do this, and so I just felt like, I don't know, I guess you're like Yardley Borough's councilperson, but also as your neighbor, I felt like she fully supports it too, so, yeah, please, 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 please.
For the children.
For the kids, who sat through the last hour and a half with very minimal disruption.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Paul Miniter, I live in 1128 University Drive, I'm one of the 11 houses in the borough. I've raised my four kids there, my youngest is now 10, and she wants to walk down the hill. My backyard is used by kids on their bikes, on their scooters, and I permit that, I want to be a good neighbor, but Mr. Miniter is also afraid that someone's going to go down my hill, and my hill is very severe, that someone's going to get hurt. I work in the grant business, I applaud the effort to get this when there's a non-match. From a business perspective, I would be pursuing this if this was my business. So from the business perspective, I support this, my wife, Kim, and our four kids support this, and I think that the life we've built here in Yardley Borough, adding, it doesn't lead to nowhere, it leads to downtown Yardley, where we go fishing once a week, but we park in Calico Corners, and so then we walk through the cemetery, pay our respects, because of that, I literally have 100 yards between the back of my house and Calico Corners, and an easement would be additionally wonderful for the neighborhood. So I appreciate your time, your efforts, and I wish the, the policeman was here, because having lived here and raising our four kids, there has never been a safer place, and I appreciate everything you do. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Hi, thank you. I'm Wyndham Randall, I'm actually an LMT resident, we live on Sandy Run Road, we'll be fully supportive of LMT also, hopefully completing this sidewalk project, but we moved here two years ago from Florida, and we told our realtor we only wanted to buy a house in a place that our kids could walk and trick-or-treat, that's not what we bought, but Yardley Borough is really what sold it, and so the ability for our five and eight-year-old to walk into town eventually in a very safe way is really, really important to us. So whether this happens now and it's funded, but it doesn't get completed for the next couple of years, and then at that point, you have LMT funding as well, that would really be our hope, so thank you for considering this.
Thank you.
Didn't realize anything came up. So I guess we had a full room, we were trying to make a point, that we, we truly feel, especially for our children, again, me being on the corner of Afton and Sandy Run, and my oldest being 12, and I have a 10-year-old, and my little one being so brave, still being here, six-year-old, and daily, they walk down to the Wawa, their friends come, they go fishing into the Afton Lake, and I do let them walk into town with their friends, and it is scary, I can tell you, it is scary, but I do want to let them grow up and, and have that freedom, because it's a safe little town, and that's why I love living in this little bubble, but that cut is so scary, and we need to have a sidewalk there, and again, it's not a road to nowhere, it's a very small little section for the LMT side, they do have a sidewalk coming down almost all the way to Sandy Run, so I think just getting the process going and showing the right motions and movements to that direction will definitely get them on board, because they have shown interest in the project, and we will all be there tomorrow night as well to show and share our thoughts and feelings, and yeah, safety is our number-one concern, and I think it's just a danger zone, and there are more and more kids now, I mean, I see kids out in the borough all day, every day, so I don't know if there's more now than there was before, but I know that my kids are wobbling, so they're out and about all the time, so.
Thank you, and just for the record, can you state your name and address?
Nala Surenne, 107 West Afton.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other public comment this evening? Yes, ma'am?
So I'm back, round two, Terry Greenland, 75 West Afton Avenue, and I'm in that little spot where the Breeze sidewalk ends, and then you go around the corner, and I'm up on the hill. So I just really had a question, which way are we looking for the sidewalk, what side of the street?
I guess we can't get the.
Do we know?
No, yeah, we do, we, we can't get that slide up, can we?
Building side, the other side.
Yeah, we.
You're not going on, okay.
It's the side that it's already on.
Okay, this, where the sidewalk ends, you're hoping to continue that?
Correct.
Forty-six years, forty-six years I've been praying for this, I hope it happens.
All right, well, never give up.
More power. Okay, thanks.
And can I, President Thompson, do you mind if I respond to your comment, just really fast? So, just to respond to your comment, we, we have kicked around the idea informally of going on the other side, just as like a mock, would it be easier, would it be cheaper, would it be, but the preferred side is to go on your side, because, you know, right now, you have a sidewalk going into a hill on the side of your property, and, you know, it would take care of that intersection at Lookover.
Ground building, next, good luck.
Up for the challenge.
It's not, fortunately, it's not the first time a sidewalk is going in anywhere, but it does have its unique situations, yeah.
Hi, I'm Bob Hogan, I'm a resident of LMT. Just first, you just want to, you know, support, you know, applying, you know, for Yardley Borough to apply, you know, for this grant, you know, for a sidewalk project. I'm primarily, that I ride my bike, you know, up and down Afton pretty regularly, rather than, you know, walking, you know, that I'm, you know, a little bit further distance into LMT. But I just, you know, wanted to also address of like, you know, of, you know, some of the long-term things as far as we were addressing, as far as with the, the speed limit signs, you know, of the 25, but I think, you know, exactly on the opposite side of, you know, going on the uphill, that it still is a 40 going on the uphill, which may be like a requirement, you know, as far needed for acceleration, but just as something like, you know, to consider that it's like, hey, if you got cars are coming, even though everybody's going over that speed limit of 25, you know, anyway, just of having, you know, the 40-mile-an-hour sign on the uphill, it's kind of inviting, you know, that everybody kind of thinks that it's 40 miles an hour in both directions on that hill. So it's something that could be, you know, just, you know, brought to attention, if it can be considered of lowering that speed limit sign that's within the borough to be, you know, at 25, you know, going on the uphill as well. Also, just, you know, for bicycles in particular, you usually, you know, you have to be going with the, you know, the flow of the auto traffic, to which, you know, all the bicyclists, you know, do, including, you know, the kids, they're using the other side of Afton, you know, going on the uphill. So just, you know, one of the things that always catches my attention when I'm going going on that uphill is, uh, you know, that, that I just feel it's like sort of connected, you know, with like, you know, this project, um, of, you know, public safety of using, uh, Afton. That there's, uh, right across, uh, from Sandy Run Road, that's, you know, right on the border of the borough, there's a sunken area of the, um, uh, shoulder that I wonder if could ever get addressed, you know, because that creates a safety hazard for the bicycles and even people that, you know, walk up and down, uh, Afton on that opposite side, that they have to kind of veer much closer into traffic. Uh, and just also with them using that shoulder, you know, for bicycles and walking, that if there could be more attention to, uh, maintaining the, uh, the brush overgrowth, same thing, that it's like if it's pushing into the shoulder, people that are riding the bikes and, and walking, it creates a hazard, you know? So if it could be addressed, you know, more often. Great, thank you.
I may just, uh, say, uh, one thing, response, yeah, just, just to, uh, to respond about the water, again, that the important thing about sidewalks now, it would only be one side, but whenever you can get water into the pipe and off the road, you have less erosion, and you have less of those problems where the edge of the road, you know, it was repaved in the last two years or so, it got wider, but it's already starting to get narrower again because it's just, the edge just falls in from all that water. So that's the nice thing about sidewalks is you kind of, you can do both at once.
Other comment this evening?
There was Cory Finer.
Cory Finer.
Hi, you might know me, um, or may not. My name is Cory Finer, and my address is 133 North Main Street. And, um, a saying popped into my mind, which is, everyone is waiting for you to be the first one to speak. And so when I think about the sidewalk and I think about this proposition of we'll do it if they'll do it, but maybe they'll do it if we do it, it sounds to me like they're already doing it, just not yet. So it doesn't also sound like an either-or situation. It sounds like we can have it all with community, with work, and if not for ourselves, for the children, not our children, but other people's children. My kids, I wish, you guys are amazing, my kids don't go outside at all. They're like, but I go outside, and I go up Afton, and I've been asked to not go up Afton anymore because if something happens to me, then we're no one to take care of our kids. So even if we don't like it, and even if feelings get hurt, I'm a very emotional person, I'm a, I'm a mother, I'm a poet, it's just not about us. This is, it's just bigger than us. It's about their kids and the moms and the people on the bikes. This town was really sleepy when I, I'm, okay, no, no offense, I've lived here for a long time. Our real estate agent said it's a sleeper town. It's not. The kid, the babies that moved here, they're big, and it's scary. I was there when, you know, I arrived when the ambulance arrived when the kid was hit on Afton. It shook me. And so it's not about Borough Hall. I do not, like, I have utmost respect for everyone here in the police. I do not want a leaky roof. I don't want colds. I don't want mold, but it does not sound like an either-or. It sounds like we're kind of have it all. So if it's personal reasons you don't want to vote for, please just put it aside. The money's there, and I'm sure if the money's not there, that we'll find it. And if you want something done, ask the moms, because we'll find it too. No offense, dads, you guys qualify, you know, as well, but the community's behind this. So let's just try to vote for it, okay?
Would it be okay if I make an amendment to the motion?
Sure.
Okay. So first, um, just if I could just say, thank you to all the LMT...
Remember who seconded it? I just know if we amend.
Me.
Okay.
Yeah. So I'm amending the original rather than doing a separate amendment, because that's really complicated. Uh, but before I say that, just, I want to encourage, thank you for the people who came out, especially from Lower Makefield to our meeting, and please continue to talk to your people as well. Uh, I think they need to hear from you, and I think that they need to know, this is what happened with North Main Street. People came and asked for it, and then it happened. You know, that's how these things happen. The amendment I'd like to make, and I think to Dawn's point, is we don't want to lose, I'm trying to like be pragmatic, we don't want to lose the opportunity, but we have thoughts about economies of scale of doing this with Lower Makefield. But of course we want Lower Makefield to do it. We don't want a sidewalk to nowhere. Who wants that? But, uh, it's got to start somewhere. So how about I make the amendment that we approve, that we approve this grant application, but we don't do any engineering work if we receive the grant without a further act of counsel? This way that that issue can be brought up in the future and can be dealt with as the money comes in, and in the meantime, hopefully, Lower Makefield gets an opportunity, because these things take like a year till you hear about it anyway. That would give us an opportunity to work with Lower Makefield and encourage them to work on their side of it, and this way there'd be no risk other than we're funding this for the future. Can, so was that clear? Was my amendment clear?
Sure. Does the same person second the amend?
Can I, can I counter that?
Yeah, you can counter it, sure.
So something we've been working on the past few weeks through conversations is, um, this grant will cost approximately $6,900 for the borough to co, to get the engineering work done to apply for. So even though there's no match, there's a very small cost, $6,900, to prepare the application, and we have to pay that whether we get it or don't get it. Um, I believe, Pat, you said if we did Lower Makefield too, that would add like another $3,000 or something like that? Doesn't have to be an exact number.
For their section.
Approximately, and, and, and as we talked about, is, is what we've done with Phase Three, is like we've, we've been going after, you might think we're going a little bit backwards, but that's how we've been doing it, you know, for Phase Three and the other grants too. It's like we're trying to secure some construction funds and move it forward. Um, and, and typically with these, with the grants, with the DCED, MTF grant, the other grants that we have, they cap the, the engineering services. So, you know, it, it might be, you know, the engineering, you know, we first need to create that design of that concept, and then we could price, you know, a potential engineering service proposal out. So, you know, for, for a concept and, and to get some type of preliminary construction budget moving forward is to get that money secured. And just like Phase Three, we had, um, our first grant was for X amount of dollars. As we moved forward, we said, we need more stormwater to move it forward. We went and searched out more grants, you know, got additional grant money for Phase Three. So that's, those are the steps that we've been, you know, moving forward. So, you know, just to go back on your, you know, you know, for, for coordinating a little bit and including some of the LMT of sidewalk cost and potential budgetary numbers for stormwater and, and other things that were included in, to talk about further is, is what we were looking at, you know, economy of scale for the three thousand.
Okay, perfect. Thank you for that. Um, so something that I have personally worked on in the past couple of weeks, um, and this actually happened organically, it, um, I didn't solicit this, um, but I had someone who came forward, and they said, well, how much does it cost to apply? And I said, and that was before I had your numbers, and I said, I don't know, $5,000? And the person said, done, I'll pay the $5,000. So the borough's cost of this is $6,900. We have a donor, um, willing to pay $5,000. I'm pretty confident that we could get another $1,900 raised, and then to Dawn's point, because we're concerned of running out of money of the 14342 that we have left, um, we could potentially take that off, off the table, and if we have people who are willing to privately fund the grant application, and then too, I think it just adds some skin in the game as well because the, the person willing to do this is a Lower Makefield resident, and so, um, okay, our supervisors aren't going to act, we'll step up and pay for it ourselves.
Wow. So...
So I think the way...
Is that legal to do that?
Yeah, I think, I think at this point, you...
If you have a donation...
Game changer.
If you have a donation, then you would set a do not exceed of the amount less the donation, so like what, would it be $2,500?
Not even 19...
It would be approving $1,900.
It would be, uh, do not exceed $1,900 or, no, it's $6,900, yeah, $1,900.
Five is 1,900.
And that wouldn't, with, you know, including the...
Was it a do not exceed or was it an estimate?
This is a do not exceed.
Do not exceed $6,900 minus a $5,000 expected donation.
I mean, I don't think I'm allowed to turn the council chambers into an auction, but I think I could raise the 1,900 tonight.
Yeah, we're not going to do that, but, but that would mean if this passes that we can't spend more than $1,900.
Slistor has a comment?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I would just say at this point, I think you need to restate the motion. It's not clear.
Yeah, it's not amended.
Yeah, I, I will, I will, I will, I will restate it.
So, uh, but don't we have to like, how do we get the current motion off the table?
Can I withdraw the motion? I, I would just make a vote to deny, and then we can, we can redo it with a new motion.
All those in favor of denying the motion, please say aye.
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 Good, good to see we're unanimous. Um, okay, I would like to make a motion tonight to approve the grant application for the DCED MTF grant, uh, in the amount of $6,900 minus a $5,000 expected donation, which means not to exceed $1,900, with no engineering work to begin without prior authorization from council.
Right, motion was made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Councilperson Finer, seconded by Councilperson Stump.
Question?
Yes.
Are we putting ourselves in a, an odd position because, uh, Jared?
Yes, sir.
How do we know 100% that this person is making the donation?
The grant application...
I can't, I'm sorry.
I would never miss a call. That is loud. I love it.
How many minutes have we tried?
Oh, good. So, so the way that the motion is worded, Councilperson Applebaum, if, if, if the amount we have to spend exceeds 1,900, we would not apply, if we don't get the donation.
That, that is my point, and I just am asking, Councilman, uh, uh, Stump, uh, are you confident about that donation?
Is it 100%?
I'm, I'm confident because I spoke to the individual who is in this room, I spoke to their spouse tonight on the way in here, and the spouse's response was, just send me an invoice already.
Okay, I will trust that.
The grant is due when?
The, the grant's due the July 31st, so if you would like, you know, you could, during the workshop meeting, you could make that decision as well.
Yeah.
You know, we do, you know, this isn't where I'm coming to you and I need to get it done right away.
We have a backup in case.
So, so the one thing would be is in July, depending upon how this votes, if it's either voted tonight or our next council meeting, um, you know, July 15th, we could, you know, work on the resolution as well.
All right, are there any further comments?
Did someone second it? You did second it, yeah.
Uh, yes. Yep. Any further comments?
Yes. Um, I think that it's striking that so many people from Lower Makefield are here, were, were here tonight and have stated why it's so important, and I agree, I don't want to, you know, be redundant in comment, but it's clear that we don't want the same situation that we had with North Main Street, a project that started, what, 21 years ago? And I know that there's other issues that were like PennDOT and so forth, but to your point, Ori, planning ahead, and to your point, Cory, Cory and Ori Finer, that sometimes you have to be the first, sometimes you have to just stick your neck out. And, um, so I want to thank those people from Lower Makefield because, you know, everyone knows that you are, at least you're downtown anyway, so. Oh, by the way, I remember, never mind. Okay, thank you. That was my comment.
All right, is everyone clear what we're voting on? Is there any further public comment? Okay, I'm going to roll call vote. I'll start, Dawn. Councilperson Stump?
Yes.
Councilperson Finer?
Yes.
I'm abstaining. Councilperson Siegel Morris?
Yes.
Councilperson Scherer? What was that? Yes? Councilperson Applebaum?
Oh, thank you. 100% yes.
Councilperson Carlson, do we still have you?
Oh, he's there.
All right, so motion carries 6-0-1. And that is how you build consensus. All right.
It was like a moment of history just happened.
We will not have our feelings hurt if you leave now. We do have other business to attend to.
Don't leave.
Thank you. All right, uh, any other engineers report this evening?
Yeah, just, Paula, you know, Manager Johnson and I have talked about it, is, is, you know, the, the DCED LSA grant, you know, it, they've been starting to talk about it more, uh, so I just want to put that, you know, have council think, consider that, and we did talk about, you know, why not go after, um, something for Borough Hall for that too? Um, but, but the specifics aren't yet, out yet, but I just wanted to, to let you be aware that, that some of the, you know, talking, you know, to DCED, it's coming out soon. Okay?
You haven't been involved in the DC, in the, um, the fund for the roof, correct? That was done in-house?
Correct. The funding for the roof, yeah, what I shared with, uh, Manager Johnson, uh, back in 2018, we did prepare the design, we did go out to bid. Uh, those bids were high, so, you know, council did reject those bids, so they didn't move forward. Um, and when we prepared the LSA grant last, for last November, um, our thought is just to really update those plans, um, update that specification, um, and get that out to bid, um, depending upon how that LSA grant, um, you know, awards, where, awards go. So, you know, but, but I did, we did share with Manager Johnson just to make sure she had those old, the 2018 plans there, that when she was coordinating too, uh, she had those, those plans and from 2018.
So I, I think we should, uh, for Matt, for the benefit of Manager Johnson, I just want to make a note that we need to get estimates for, um, I don't know if there's discussion of replacing these windows. I personally, it's a historic building, we'd ask Harb about that, but...
It needs to be repainted, like, repainted. Is that what it's called, when you scrape the caulk off?
To spray, to scrape, to paint, to recaulk and fix mortar, like, all those things that are kind of like the roof.
That's sometimes more expensive than replacing, but it's important on a historic building, yes.
It's a, it's a vertical version of the roof.
Yes, yes, yep.
And I think we need estimates for all that.
Yep.
If we have the estimates, then we can decide, is it go to LSA? Do we do another one of these fun things? Do we just pay for it outright?
Yep.
You know, we don't know what we're dealing with. Are we dealing with 10,000 or 100,000 or 200,000? I don't know. So that's what is the next step, and that's free of charge, just a matter of people having people come here and do it.
Probably not going to crowdfund, crowdfund that one.
Right, right, right.
If I did it myself, would that be a conflict? I'm just, I'm just kidding. Sorry, bad.
If you want to do the work...
I grew up in an era...
Knock yourself out.
All right, all right.
You have to excuse me at this time of night.
Yes, it is getting late. Okay. Is that all?
That concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. All right, Slistor's report, please.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Just briefly, um, when the borough accepted the donation of Judy's Garden, it, it was revealed through the title that there was a small encroachment on the lot. I've been in communication with that neighboring property owner. I did provide them with a copy of a draft easement, uh, in order to, to clear up that encroachment, so I'm hopeful that that will be before you in July. Um, the other item, as it relates to the sidewalk, not to open that back up, um, but there was a commitment letter from First National Bank, uh, that needed to be updated to extend the expiration date. We did not receive that until May 30th of 2025, uh, so the financing ordinance for that funding will be before you at your next meeting.
Thank you. Any questions? Kay, Mayor's report, please.
I have a report this evening.
Thank you. We're moving into council member reports. Councilperson Siegel Morris?
Uh, just a reminder that, uh, unfortunately, your Music Off Main was canceled the past weekend. Uh, that concert will be moved to June 21st, and Music Off Main will begin this weekend on June 7th.
Thank you. Councilperson Finer?
So my report today has to do with my role as the liaison to the Planning Commission. At the recent Planning Commission, I had a discussion with them, and they kind of, um, they're a tremendous resource that they feel underutilized, and I think it's important to figure out ways where they could be of more use to us. They have two civil engineers on their, on their commission, which is free of charge, volunteer work for us. us. So my proposal of how to immediately have them be of more use, one is to create that shared folder, public folder, that we've been waiting for like a year for, where all new applications go in there, zoning, building, whatever, they all go in there. And the Planning Commission can then go in there and they can see what's being applied for, and they can pull things if they feel that it's under their area, and they can be proactive about that. Just a simple idea to get a start. I know we talked about systems and all that, but I'm just talking about simplicity. What could we do tomorrow? That's an example. The second thing is that I would like to start bringing them things that are kind of just sitting there waiting for various things to happen, to get their input and to see if they could help move things forward. Things like, what else are we doing with the Yardley Borough Trailhead? How do we execute the Judy's Garden plan? Because it was donated to us with a certain use in mind, and we want to execute that. We have a sewer thing that we've got to look through, but there's a lot of execution, and there are areas that they can provide us with guidance on those things. Even the Afton Avenue sidewalk is something that they could provide us with guidance on. Again, they have engineers. So I'm really just saying, hey, what do you all think about putting together some documentation of these projects and giving it to them and letting them go to work to the extent that they want to, since they are here for that purpose? Thank you.
Thank you. Councilperson Carlson, I think you've extended your estimates on this internet situation. Are they charging you more?
My phone position is way, I'm still hanging in there, but I could drop at any moment. So when I do drop, I mean, I'm walking out.
All right.
No report.
Thank you, sir. Councilperson Applebaum?
Oh, sorry. Thank you. Okay, first of all, the E A C, Environmental Advisory Commission, has been making great strides. They have accomplished a great deal of public outreach through programs. As an example, Bird Walks, they're planning a Bird Talk, Tree, excuse me, I take that, retract that, Tree Talk, in collaboration with Spearhead Project Earth. I don't have a date yet, but there will be a collaboration between the two at Spearhead Project Earth, where the scientific lead will, a forestry graduate of the University of New Hampshire will be leading a discussion, and they will take another walk to talk about the trees in Yardley and how best to manage the canopy and replacement of trees and so forth. So I just, I'm very proud of the amount of success and outreach that they've done so far. Secondly, I did mention earlier about a grant that Spearhead Project Earth got from the American Water Charitable Foundation that continue to maintain the Yardley Riverside Garden that's next to the Warren Memorial. I'm happy to report, though I haven't seen it because it happened today, but the plantings at the upper top level have been replaced and are going to be maintained by Spearhead Project Earth with assistance from the E A C. Additionally, some work is being, has been done where they cut down the weeds and invasive plants so that it gives you a much clearer view of the water and the beautiful view that it is. And because of that, and observationally, last year, we saw that the animals came back, the beautiful plants, you know, those plants that attract wildlife and butterflies and other things. I'm not a scientist, if you haven't guessed, sorry, but I do care deeply. And one of the other things that it did attract were people. And what I have heard from the community and people from outside the community, and when I talk about community and economic development, finally remember the name of the committee, is that the impact that it gives, not only for our community, but the fact that people want to come and visit Yardley because of it being a destination, which is why it's so great to hear about the, you know, progress on the Trailhead, Judy's Garden, and this particular project. So there's money that's being funded into that, and you can be sure that we'll continue to have it maintained. We have also, I'm trying to think what else is happening. I think that's it for now. I'll stop there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Councilperson Scherer?
No report.
Thank you. Councilperson Stump?
So Parks and Rec held our two races, one on Memorial Day, the Main Street Mile. There were 197 runners that finished in that. And officially, and technically, if you count my family, because we forgot our bibs at home, we registered and then didn't have our bibs, so we weren't, in the official count, it brings it to even 200 runners. Then the Yardley 5K had 437 runners, which was a huge increase this year, and want to thank everyone that signed up to run because it was for a special cause this year. Parks and Rec is in the process of raising money to replace some equipment at the tot lot, is probably also looking at applying for grants. I don't know the totals of how much money has been raised because the 5K was just two days ago. It may not cover the whole amount this year, but I'm confident that, give it some more time and a few other races to raise money, and we'll be looking at some new tot lot equipment, which my daughter will be extremely happy about, just in time for her birthday. She turns three next week. Also, on May 13th, the Yardley Business Association held one of their business leadership events. It was the second of three, and they have another one coming up, so it's wonderful to see Y B A doing more to bring business owners together in town. I was able to attend that, and there were several business owners present. And what I loved, I was actually only able to go to a small part of it because I had to get to the Parks and Rec meeting. But what I loved is the part that I was in there on was, was business owners talking about how they can support one another, rather than doing each other's competitors, how can we help each other win and get ahead. Have also done some work with the D C N R, just conversations back and forth, I wouldn't call it official work, about the water levels in the canal, and I've been learning a lot about that. And so far, things have been going pretty good. I know it may not be exactly how everyone wants it at every exact moment, but we do not have a dried out canal like we've had for the past two years, and so I really appreciate their efforts there. And that is the conclusion of my report.
Thank you.
Mr. Stump, could I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
Is it true that the bridge project has been extended to next year? And the reason I'm asking is because of the water levels, it would affect the water levels?
Oh, on which?
The College, East College Avenue Bridge.
Yeah, so I actually threw the process with the D C N R at the meeting we went to. That was something that they brought up. They said that the, that the bridge project has been pushed into next year, and I.
And Mr., can't remember his name, Bernie Beno.
I, so, so it was after the meeting, I went up to the person who said that, because I said, wait, we had no idea that the, the bridge was delayed. We moved an event for this. We moved the location of Harvest Day because the bridge was going to be under construction. And then I reached out to the head of the Bucks County General Services, which they oversee bridges, and they did confirm with us that that has been pushed into next year. So they said, we're free to host Harvest Day at the original location if we so choose.
That's interesting. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any discussion items this evening that weren't submitted? All right, then we'll move on to our last four items, but they're all related, having to do with our interim police chief and our police transition committee. I'll just start by saying there was comments made at the last meeting that folks felt uncomfortable about this process. And I'll state emphatically that, to my knowledge and to all of the dealings that I've had on this committee so far, which hasn't been a lot, we just formed, nothing unethical is occurring. We haven't even started our work yet. We haven't interviewed anyone. We haven't collected any data. But I'm, I'm an open person, and I hope that everyone on this board knows that they can come to me and say, hey, I'm uncomfortable, and I would like that we reopen this item. And that's what we're doing this evening. But before we do that, I just want to state that, that we need to talk to one another, and that we especially should not make comments when the people who those comments are directed at are not in the room to defend themselves. So we have four items on the agenda. The first is clarification regarding the interim police appointment scope and responsibilities. This item came up because some members of council weren't sure whether or not this committee was handling the interim chief's position or not. The committee is not handling the interim chief's position. So I'll just read this because, you know, I wrote it before 9:49 at night, so it probably makes more sense than I would make right now. So it's Yardley Borough Council Memorandum of Clarification. This memorandum is issued to clarify the current process regarding the appointment of an interim chief of police and the potential formation of a search committee for a permanent chief of police in Yardley Borough. The police transition committee will provide valuable input and background information on the structure and operations of the Yardley Borough Police Department. However, the police transition committee is not overseeing the appointment of the interim chief of police. This process, including all deliberations and decisions regarding the interim chief of police, remains under the full purview and authority of the Yardley Borough Council as a whole. At this time, the council has not determined whether a formal search committee will be necessary to identify and select a permanent chief of police. Should the council choose to proceed with a search committee, they may opt to utilize the existing police transition committee, handle the search process with the full council, or form a separate dedicated search committee. No committee has been authorized by council to commence work as a search committee, and no formal direction has been given regarding the structure or responsibility of such a group. This memorandum serves as certification of the current state of the process and the Borough Council's role in overseeing all matters related to the appointment of an interim chief of police and the potential formation of a search committee. So I think where the confusion arose was when I first, during a working session, which we're supposed to talk to each other, talked about the police transition committee, I had this roadmap, and I said, you know, the committee hasn't even been formed yet, this is just a draft, and it said like some potential, remember, it was that squiggly road, and it's in your packet, some potential things we might do. So search was a potential down the line after we vote on what we're doing with our police force. So that's been removed now, and also all dates have been removed because we're just going to take off the time pressure on us. And so I hope everybody's more comfortable with the roadmap that's in your packet and this clarification on process. I will take any questions.
Can I, can I make a statement?
Sure.
I would just like to, at the last meeting, I made some comments. You weren't here. I don't want to rehash it, but I would like to, to issue a public apology to you, Mrs. Thompson, for making comments that were, they weren't all directed to you, but part of them were, and you weren't here to defend yourself. I think your request to do that when you're in the room is fair, and I will make every effort to abide by that in the future.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Any?
I have a question. Well, just, I wonder if, because we're about to vote on the police transition committee, and here the language says will provide, would you be open to, like, changing that to would provide? And then where it says is not overseeing, would not oversee, in other words, or the proposed police transitions? In other words, this is assuming that that has been voted for? So if this could make it into a hypothetical statement, then I would feel more comfortable.
Yeah, I mean, this is just based on the committee's stand, so, and, you know, you've made requests via a letter to, to me about the committee, and none of those involve dissolving the committee. Am I understanding that correctly?
I would have to elaborate on that question, on that, because it's not an either or. It has to do more with timing, my concerns. But just for this, this thing we're voting on in front of us now, I just think it's will.
The police transition committee exists, and you made no requests to dissolve the committee.
I'm just saying that we're about to vote on it, reaffirmation.
Right.
So if it's not reaffirmed, then what we just said here is in contradiction.
Yeah, I mean, we're not voting on this document, and we can if you want to.
Oh, we're not voting on this? Okay.
No, this is just a memo.
It's a memo.
Saying that the police transition committee is not overseeing.
Then it's just, it's just a memo.
Yeah, I think we're reading too much into it.
No problem. That makes sense then. Thank you.
All right. So anything else on that item? All right, reaffirmation of formation of the police, police? Oh, yes, ma'am, please.
You said you changed the timeline. Can you say what that, what you changed it to?
No end dates.
Oh.
All right, item B. So I'll also read this one. Formation of the police transition committee. The police transition committee is tasked with evaluating the current and future policing needs of the borough. The committee will review the department's structure, staffing, and service delivery, analyze options for maintaining an independent police department, or exploring shared services models with other municipalities, considering legal, operational, and financial impacts, engage stakeholders, including officers, staff, council members, and residents, to ensure transparency and build community trust, conduct a financial and operational review of the current police budget, staffing costs, and long-term sustainability under various service models, provide a written recommendation to Borough Council outlining findings, rationale, and a recommended path forward, including an implementation roadmap. The committee will operate as a recommending body to council. While members may build consensus around issues, the committee has no voting authority. All final decisions rest with Borough Council. I move to approve and reaffirm the formation of the police transition committee. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion was made by myself and seconded by Councilperson Siegel Morris. Discussion.
So then, the next item is to, actually, item D, is to solicit additional applications. So is there a way that we can switch this around? Because if this passes, but that doesn't pass, then I think we.
No, we can't solicit additional applications for a committee that doesn't exist.
It doesn't exist. But this, then, could this be modified to be contingent upon the additional applicants?
Can we reverse the order of D and C?
Sure. If you are that concerned about it, we can do that.
My second point is that I just am concerned, and part of my communications with you are around that, that there was too much going on at the same time, and that our current police department, our chief left in March, our current police department doesn't have an official interim chief of police. And my suggestion would be to make that solid before embarking on work for the committee. So I could support this if it starts, kind of like what we were saying with Afton, conditional upon that process being complete, contract signed, then we move on to form the committee and move forward with the transition committee. So I would want this to be contingent upon that. Is that something that you'd be open to?
Well, I think we should start recruiting people now and not wait, so that we can interview them and have them ready to go.
That, that would be kind of like interviewing people in advance for a future appointment, you know, for the, our other committees. I don't see any issue with that. But I don't think the committee should really do anything and really be formed until.
So the committee, as part of this, is not permitted to meet or do any work until the new members are added?
It, I would say that the new members, the process of adding the new members, I mean, how does the committee, I guess, you know, because that's the next item, I'd rather.
So I'm just a little confused because we had a conversation, and I put everything down that you said would make you comfortable. So it's different now. I just, I'm having trouble chasing the living target.
Okay, I'm sorry if it's confusing, but I think it makes more sense. I'm happy to support this. It just needs to be contingent upon our current police department being stabilized, and that means a signed contract for interim chief of police. I think that's essential. It's important for many reasons, and I'm happy to go ahead with this, but this shouldn't begin doing, being a committee. The formation of the committee shouldn't happen until that process is done.
But we're working on the contract, and it sounds to me like it's going to be soon. Why is, what is the harm in getting applications and interviewing?
I'm not saying that applications are, I'm saying that part, getting applications and interviewing is fine. I'm saying the committee should not exist as a committee until the contract is signed for a chief of police. Interim.
Yeah, I don't understand. I don't understand what one has to do with the other at all. I mean, if you don't want to vote for this, that's fine, but, so, the chief of, the interim chief of police is being handled by council. This is not council. This is a transition committee. committee, right? And, you know, that, the solicitor's drawing it up, so one has nothing to do with the other.
Well, then, if it's drawing it up and it's going to happen in a week or two, fine, this could be contingent upon that. It puts more pressure to get that done and make sure it's correctly done.
You know, just to chime in, I just, I think it's a longer process than a couple weeks, it's going to take some time.
Why are we rushing the contract?
Why are we rushing the committee?
We're not. It's literally not allowed to meet until Jared's committee interviews the people.
That, I, I'm just telling you, I think that there...
But I, I'm to, I'm, I'm with you.
It's my opinion, you don't have to agree with it.
No, I'm with you, and I, you know, I'm resubmitting, and we're, we're going over it, but at some point, it begins to not make sense anymore.
I think it makes sense to stabilize our existing police force. I'm sorry it didn't happen sooner, I think it should have happened sooner, and it didn't, and it's fine, here we are. I think that is the first order of business, and I do think that there is a connection, and I think that that needs to be squared away, and then this can proceed. If you want to interview people and have people kind of on standby in the meantime, I think there's no problem with that, but I don't think the committee should begin work as a committee until we have our police department stabilized. I don't think that's unreasonable.
I do believe members of council here have said how smoothly the police department is working, and that Sergeant Golden is acting head of agency, and he is aware of that. So I do believe that everything is working fairly smoothly.
What's the, what's the harm in waiting?
We are waiting, though, but I also don't think we should sit on our hands for another 12 months when we can...
12 months? Who said 12 months?
No, but I'm not, but that's how long things tend to take around here if we don't move, yeah, everything takes that long around here, it does.
It's not going to take 12 months, because that would be a big problem, because, they just, that would be, you're saying it's going to be...
I also have a question about the, adding the committee members, and then wouldn't all of council agree to who these additional committee members?
Yes.
Definitely.
Okay, thank you.
No, it's not, just in a nutshell.
So that's just going to...
In fact, I even, I even stated to Caroline that I would be willing to remove myself from that process, but I am the chair of Community Outreach, and so she bunted it back to me.
Yeah, that's fine. So, we have an item on the agenda, it's been motioned and seconded. Any other comments from anyone?
So, can I make an amendment to the motion?
I don't, I don't personally see a reason to amend it, and I made the motion, so if the motion fails, then we'll reassert it, because it already says in here that we're not going to be allowed to do work until we add more members, which is going to take time.
But can't I make an amendment to a motion that if it passes separately?
So right now, there's a motion on the table that's been presented for a vote, you should vote on that.
Okay. Maybe I'm misunderstanding, I thought, I thought if you make an amendment to a motion on the table, the amendment gets voted on, and then you go back. If it, if it passes, then you vote on the original motion.
The motion's not on, I'm sorry.
If, if it fails, then the original motion...
Right, but, the president of council has made a motion, it received a second, there was discussion, and it now, at this point, is being presented for vote.
Okay.
Ma'am.
Okay, there's a number of things going on here. First of all, you're discussing additional applicants as if the people you handpicked are already on it.
No, the Community Outreach Committee is going to oversee the process.
Hasn't started yet.
So, it'll be put open, it'll be advertised, and then it'll be done the way every other committee is advertised.
For the three additional?
So, sort of. We have committees of council that I put people on. I put Ori Finer as chair of Public Works, I put Kim Siegel Morris as chair of Public Safety. That's not voted upon, so, yes, this council does have the ability to put people on committees, we serve as liaisons to committees. None of us have voting power, remember, this, this board does, I'm speaking, this board does not have voting power. They are going to collect data, and, and that data will be unbiased. There's no way you, like, we will make sure it's unbiased data, it'll be like we interview the public, the public will say what they want. We interview the police force, they say what they want. We look at the data we have around the budget. It's not like we're, you know, it's, we're, the data points will be empirical in nature, right?
Well, you have to put people who know what they're doing on the committee. Your people you selected, there's conflicts of interest, several conflicts of interest, nobody knows what their qualifications are, and it's an important, this is probably one of the most important committees that is going to happen.
In forming this police committee, or, you know, we're voting on it again tonight, we, I looked at over 40 municipalities that have done transition or search committees. It's the, the chair of the board of supervisors, or the president of council, it's the mayor or the head of the police force, it's the borough manager or the supervisor, the township manager, and then it's usually somebody who works within the police force. That's what I did hear.
But you don't have somebody who works within the police force.
Yes, Linda Storopoly has served as the volunteer administrative assistant to the police for several years. She has touched every piece of paper in the police department because she scanned and digitalized them all. She helped them apply for grants, she worked with the interns, she knows every single officer in the force.
You don't seem to know the difference between a sworn officer and a volunteer civilian. Plus, she has a major conflict of interest because she is a volunteer civilian, and, so does, and they all have worked very closely with Chief Kelly, and since you were pushing this merger with Lower Makefield Township, it's already been sabotaged. It needs to start out clean. Why did you pick these people?
I just explained, I modeled it off of over 40 other municipalities that I looked at. Are all municipalities in the world corrupt, Dr. Pearl Mutter?
This certainly smells like it, I can tell you that.
Would I model something that 40 other municipalities have done, that makes me corrupt?
May I make a comment on that, please? So, in this particular situation, I don't know about 40 municipalities, but the main one looked at, it's pretty clear, is Lower Makefield Township.
No, I didn't look at Lower Makefield.
But that, that was, no, 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 I mean, I mean, in terms of who Yardley Borough would contract out police services to, that is the main provider that's been looked at. It was mentioned here many times. When I mentioned other options, I was pretty much shot down, although there are other options. That municipality's chief was the chief here. Nothing wrong with it, good guy, did good work here, not questioning that. When you have people with close personal relationships with that individual, who are then going to evaluate contractual offers from that department, it's like your good friend is giving you an offer, it's not going to be the same as when you have objective members looking at that same, and that's what I think Dr. Pearl Mutter is talking about.
So are you changing your...
I'm not changing anything, I'm just trying to explain...
I understand the comment.
I think that you're just basically calling, if we have a personal relationship with somebody, we're just going to unilaterally be dishonest or...
No, it's not that it's going to be dishonest.
Nobody here, do not please, you don't want to be interrupted, nobody here is pushing for a merger.
No, why not?
Nobody's here wants to lose our police department, we want to fund it.
The gold standard is an independent police force for Yardley Borough. If we can do it, we do it. And that's not even what we're, that's not even what this is about, we're not even there yet, we're just like, we're looking at data, and the first thing is interviewing the police force and interviewing the public. Like, let's get, let's get to that.
I'm merely saying that when you have multiple people, the majority actually of the committee, with close personal relationships with the main person who's going to be bidding on a contract, there is a difficult situation that is not, does not, is not the same objectivity as when you have people who don't have those close personal relationships, that's all. I'm not saying there's corruption.
And, but, there's no voting power, and also, if you don't have a relationship with somebody who you've worked with for 10, for, in my case, eight years, like, if you don't, if you, if you wouldn't say hi to them, if you don't have, like, a good relationship, there's something wrong.
That's not what I'm saying, but what I'm saying is that the six people here, the majority of them have that, and that's why the forthcoming items add additional people, which I think helps to resolve that issue. In an ideal world, with, responding to what Dr. Pearl Mutter's saying, if you just had open applications for everybody in the committee, and you let head council say, well, borough manager, she knows a lot of things, she should be on there, that's a good case. Mayor, he should be on there because X, Y, Z, good case, okay? Let council decide on each one, but I understand that, I, wait, wait, please, please, wait, you asked me, excuse me, excuse me, you asked me not to interrupt you, so, so please don't interrupt me, okay? I don't know why that's funny, I think we can all...
Because, because Ori, because you interrupt all the time, go ahead.
Can we just move?
I'm not done yet, I still have some things to say, and this is important. First of all, go ahead.
Sorry, let me just finish, okay? I agreed to the three additional people, and I think that's a compromise, and I'm okay with that.
No, that's what you asked for.
Yeah, but that's, I'm saying, in my ideal world, it would be all new people that would come before council and be voted on, I think it's very simple. We did that with the elevation board, I'm telling you that. My ideal world, and I'm okay with the three additional ones, that helps solve the problem.
I think you're missing some...
Moving target, I have a right...
Professionals, like Borough Council people, and the mayor, and this is what you want to choose, you know, to, to look at people, you don't want, no offense, but you don't want the other people from the public that don't, haven't been on the safety committee or haven't, you know, been...
I'm just saying this should all be approved by council. Each, each member should be approved individually through an application process, that's all. In my ideal world, I'm okay with this, let's...
Dr. Pearl Mutter, please finish.
First, I'd like to correct Councilman Share.
Woman, woman, please, thank you.
Councilwoman Share, I would like to correct you, there are people in this town who have more experience than the council member who's been on a public safety committee. I have 25 years' experience in law enforcement, at all levels. There's a chief of police who lives in Yardley Borough who may want to apply for this, there's a lot of other people, there's FBI agents in this town that may want to apply for this. So it should be open, shouldn't be three spots, it should be all the spots open, because you're setting a precedent to, you're basically stacking the deck and pretending you're not. And, Councilwoman Siegel Morris, your own manager, Paula Johnson, told me herself that she wants to merge with Lower Makefield, she told me three different times, so don't say that this isn't something that people don't want to do. Finally, in terms of the interim police, I agree with Councilman Finer. You need to get an acting chief of police here. How long is this going to take? You've had two months. I mean, you can light a fire under lawyers to do other things, you cannot, and you wonder why it's a problem? Do you even know what's going on with the officers in this department right now? They are afraid, they are, like, afraid for their jobs, you can't do this to people. You can't just put all these different things out there, talk about, well, we, we may look for this, we may do that, you need to absolutely stabilize this situation, it's hard enough to recruit good people, and now you're going to create this committee that is not being done in an equitable manner, and there's no need to rush, you said it yourself, why are we rushing? Swearing the interim chief of police, the committee does not exist right now, so the six members cannot be on it. You're stacking the deck, do you understand that? You're setting a bad precedent.
I don't understand that.
You're not the dictator of Yardley Borough, you don't get to choose this.
We're voting on it, Dr. Pearl Mutter, I'm sorry that you don't get a vote up at this table, but we're voting on it now.
You're destabil, you have destabilized this police department, and you don't seem to care about messing with people's lives. You are really...
You're just wrong.
I'm not wrong, you, maybe you need to talk to them.
I'd like to just put out two things. I have heard, do you have a microphone? It's hard to get it away from the attorney, I apologize. I have heard Borough Manager Johnson state publicly opposite of what has been stated in the last two minutes.
Oh, here we go again.
I'm correcting fact, thank you. Also, we have talked to members of the department from top rank down, and, again, I disagree with some of the facts stated, I think they are all in a good spot there, have all been openly communicated with, and I don't see destabilization right now.
Yeah, and I also like...
May I respond to?
I have a comment to make. I'd also just like to say, we are bound by Sunshine rules to decide things as a council every two weeks. That's, that makes it hard to move quickly on contracts, yes, but at the last council meeting, there was an executive session, the topic was personnel, and now, things are moving forward. We can't, we can't meet every day with our attorneys and look at the contract as a council, we just can't, it's not allowed.
I understand that, but, this is such a serious situation, I'm sure, you violate the Sunshine Act every dozens of times, you never list any of these meetings, you had two meetings with your committee that you created violating the Sunshine Act.
It wasn't a Sunshine violation.
And why not? How is that not...
Because we were picking dates to meet, the Public Works Committee meets every month on Zoom, which is not allowed also, and you're not calling them out now.
I think that council members would take the time to get this interim...
Not a quorum on the police...
Acting chief sworn in. I don't think you need to keep waiting another two weeks and another two weeks, it's not good, it's not good.
I can't vote on a contract that doesn't exist, Councilperson Finer.
So, your response to Mayor Harding, you were here during that police committee, transition committee meeting, that I was here, so for you to say, you've heard Manager Johnson say the things, she said, looked right at me and said, if we don't do a merger, we're going to get any IT.
Mayor wasn't here.
Oh, you weren't here? I excuse you then, well, she said that, so, that's why I was confused, I'm sorry. That makes sense then, but she did say that.
I'm not saying she didn't, I'm just saying I heard her state publicly that she's...
Okay, it seemed pretty strong, and I'm happy that she's honest about where she's coming from.
Yes.
Yeah, so I just think at this point, right, a motion was made, it was seconded, we had discussion on it, Ori, if you want to make an amended motion, you can make that amended motion, we can then see if you have a second to that, we can discuss it, at that point, there'll be a vote on that, if it fails, we'll go back to the original motion, if it passes, it passes.
Yeah, I would like to...
Do we need to vote on this one first?
Not if he, not if he makes an actual amended motion.
Well, the, somewhere in here, it said, I'm trying to find it, if someone could point me to where it is, that the committee would not start data collection until it was fully staffed, but that's later, so, because it doesn't talk about the staffing yet. So what I'd like to do is amend this motion, very simply, to say, the committee will not begin work until it is fully formed, including all nine members.
Oh, that was already what I...
Yeah, you said before, we can't start work until we have a signed interim chief, you've changed it.
No, well, that's... I'm losing track on which one we're on now, we're on number...
B.
B, okay.
The letter.
Yeah, so, I'm back to, let me change that, take that away, strike that. I would like to amend this motion to not begin work until the interim chief of police contract is signed. That does not preclude interviewing potential candidates for the committee.
Oh, never mind. Is there a second? Okay, so we'll vote on the original motion, which was to form the committee. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Abstentions? Motion carries? How many people we have here now? Five?
Five, one.
One, zero. All right, moving on to membership, members of the committee were accepted by council consensus on 4/16/2025, a request has been made to reaffirm these members through a formal vote of council. The members for reaffirmation are Caroline Thompson, Chris Harding, Ori Finer, Kim Siegel Morris, Paula Johnson, and Linda Storopoly. Again, nobody has voting power. Motion, I move to reaffirm through appointment the following members of the Police Transition Motion, I move to reaffirm through appointment the following members of the Police Transition Committee, Caroline Thompson, Chris Harding, Ori Finer, Kim Segal Morris, Paula Johnson, and Linda Storopoly. Is there a second?
Second.
I made a motion, it was seconded by councilperson Share. Discussion from council. Hearing none, I'll call the public. Go ahead.
You said there was a consensus. At the last meeting, Jared Stumpf made it clear that he didn't consent. I watched the meeting, there was no consensus, there was no vote. So you didn't have a consensus. Again, the dictator thing. You can't just, you are just changing all the rules and putting these people on the committee that it's never been done this way. Six people that have conflicts of interest that should not be on this committee. And the process here, I don't know why, if they're so good, why don't you open it up? You're, you're actually taking the seats of people that are probably more qualified to do all the things you want to do. I mean, you have people in this town that have much more experience than, that should have the opportunity to be on this and not limited to three seats.
On 4/15 at minute 57, I introduced the committee members publicly, by name, listed all of them, and humbly asked, this is a quote, for council's approval. No dissent was offered. At minute 5830, I asked for consensus from council to approve the committee. Michelle Share moved, and Ori Finer seconded. Since I was asking for consensus, no formal vote was required. We all chuckled. David Applebaum enthusiastically added, "I consent," and then joined in the laughter. Further, I asked for councilperson Finer's feedback on my list of committee members prior to announcing this publicly, and received what could only be construed as an enthusiastic thumbs up. And, yeah, so it's in there. Go back to minute 57.
Well, let's go back to the minutes from the last meeting where Jared Stumpf said that he did not consent. He said it three times.
Consensus of council, you have to say, I don't like, I don't give consent. Otherwise, I say, do I have consensus? And if no, that's how it works.
Yeah, let me just add some clarity to that, though. So because things happen so fast in there, I didn't realize, I didn't realize that that was my time to say something because it happened very quickly. However, because we're here now and we're taking a vote on it, I'm, I'm good with where we're at with this.
Okay. Okay, you want?
I want to go there, not really. I'm curious about something.
It's not an electric chair.
Depends if I upset someone or not. I just want to gain clarity from something that was said, perhaps was directed at Solicitor, perhaps at someone else. Was it said during this meeting that, who's the person acting as the current Chief Golden? That there's a contract out to make him the interim Chief of Police? Is that, did I get that wrong?
That's correct.
That's correct, okay. And then I heard that it won't be two weeks, and it takes up to a year. So in between those two, what is a realistic timeline to get an interim Chief of Police in our town?
It's not going to be a year. We have a specialist in employment law at my office. Her name's Keon Groundy. She's working on it. You know, part of the process is obviously approaching the officers, approaching the, you know, Sergeant Golden, and then there's also other approvals that are needed through the union and other things. So there's steps involved. It's outside my area of expertise, but she's handling it, and her advice on the matter was that, you know, it could take a couple months.
So like, a guesstimate would be like, three months, maybe, would you say?
I, again, I-
It's guess. I'm not, I know you're on the record here. Couple months.
Yeah, I mean, look, it just depends on how things move forward with, you know, the negotiation and everything else.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
So now we're saying we won't have an acting chief for at least three months?
We have an acting head of the agency, and he has been approved through the proper channels to have access to everything. He needs access, he has chain of command. He already is, he is the designated officer in charge for his contract.
So legally, who is responsible for the police department? I mean, he's acting this way, but in terms of the union and the collective bargaining agreement, Sergeant Golden is in a situation right now, if something happens, is that covered? Is he covered?
So he is currently the acting police officer in charge, and we are now going through the process to take care of things through the collective bargaining agreement and the union, and that's outside of my area of expertise. But there is an expert in that area that's handling it and that is engaged with it and is going to do it as expeditiously as possible.
But what I'm asking, is he at risk if something happens, and he is the head of agency, whatever that means, that an acting chief would be covered differently by a collective bargaining agreement?
Chiefs don't have collective bargaining agreements.
Oh, well, I'm just legally-
Yeah, he, his contract covers him as the designated officer in charge, so that's the clause that's at play now.
But is, has he signed that? Is that in play right now?
It's part of the collective bargaining agreement, yes.
Okay, so he's covered?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. I still think it should happen a little quicker. And should it be retroactive if he becomes the interim chief?
He is receiving increased pay as designated officer in charge.
But no, it has other, it has other ram of, it has other meaning.
I don't know that he, you should talk to him. I don't know that he would want to necessarily get retroactive. So as a chief, you don't get the same things as a collective bargaining civil service police officer do, does, like, overtime, for example, so.
I'm not, that's not what I mean. The acting interim chief, after one year, automatically becomes the Chief of Police. So you have now caused two months, and now it's going to be another three months.
See, and that's, I'm going to take issue with that because that's not what I said. I said that we're expeditiously working on it, there's a specialist in this area of the law that's working on it, that's been communicating with, with members of Borough Council, is going to be communicating with the sergeant, and this is something that's being handled.
I, I heard you, I heard you, but the clock is ticking. He lost two months.
I don't know what you want to say, Dr. Promoter. I can't draw up the contract, Ori can't draw up the contract, Kim can't draw up the contract.
And obviously, the person at Curtin Heifer can't work any faster than she is.
No, that's just not, that's not fair at all.
No, and the delay in the process isn't her. There's other parties involved, there's other steps that have to take place. It's not just, we draft a contract and it's done.
The question in terms of retroactive, will the time that he's putting in now-
I don't know. I'm not going to give you an answer tonight. I have no idea.
Because he's losing time on what would have gotten him-
I understand.
You understand that?
I'll make a note of that. It has nothing to do with the-
Okay, and that would be great if you could look into that.
Sure. Thank you. All right, any other comments?
My comment has to do with item D and C and the recommendation from Jared to, to switch them. The reason being that if C passes and D doesn't, then that's problematic for me. Is there any way we could make C contingent on D passing?
Can't we just, can I just make, should we just want to make a big motion?
That's fine.
For all of it?
Sure.
Okay, so I'm going to amend my motion. I move to reaffirm through appointment the following members of the Police Transition Committee, Caroline Thompson, Chris Harding, Ori Finer, Kim Segal Morris, Paula Johnson, and Linda Storopoly. And for the Community Outreach Committee to further solicit additional applicants for appointment as outlined above to the Police Transition Committee. Is there a second? Can you also second this? Thank you. And I'll just read, because I think it's important. The committee will pause data collection work until at least three additional public members are added to the committee. These individuals will serve as full members of the committee, though their focus may be directed towards specific subcommittee work as outlined below. So there's, there's five subcommittees. The shared services assessment, I'm currently, like, leading data collection there, and we're suggesting that we add one police department representative, so one of our civil service police officers to that. Current police department evaluation is being led by, or will be led by, Chris Harding and Kim Segal Morris, and we suggest adding one police department representative, a civil service police officer to that. It may be the same as the police officer above. Of course, this is all contingent upon them accepting that added duty. And then community engagement, led by Linda Storopoly, suggests adding one public member. Financial review, this is led by Paula Johnson and Don Carlson, as head of general government, is, you know, providing her data, even though not on the committee, suggests adding one public member. And then benchmarking in municipal case studies is being led by Ori Finer, suggests adding one public member. So motion is on the table, it's been seconded. Any further discussion? Hold on, we're still up with council right now. Okay, go ahead.
This is the first time I'm hearing all of what you just read. So you have already put these people that, you're, you're saying that a representative from civil service, and you're making them sort of the head of all these different categories that you-
Our civil service is, are four full-time police officers. That's what civil service is.
Okay. So you obviously have been working on this because you have all these subcommittees already, and it just seems like-
I presented, I presented all of these different areas in the working session.
Oh, I didn't see that. So, oh, when you did your PowerPoint?
Yep.
It just seems like, again, it's-
Yeah, I said proposed subcommittees and suggested membership. We can shuffle.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, just, I mean, I don't know what you want from me. I really don't.
I want it to be fair, and it doesn't, it's not fair. You've already selected this one for that committee and this one for that subcommittee. You don't even know who's going to be on it yet. So again, you're stacking the deck. You are like going zero to 60 on this for no reason whatsoever, and you don't even know who else is going to apply. And frankly, I can't say it enough, you have conflicts of interest.
Somebody, somebody needs to lead on a committee. There has to be a leader. We're not, this isn't a Quaker assembly. I love Quakerism, but it's not. At the end of the day, we have to move with agility, things need to get done. Does anybody else up here want to take my place as Chair of this committee and do all of this work? I'm willing, I'm willing to step down right now.
Well, maybe the members that aren't on it yet would like to-
Hold on, I'm waiting to hear, I'm waiting to hear a response. Does anyone else want to take over as Chair of this committee?
Who are you asking? The committee members?
The members of council, if you, who would like to take my place on this committee and do this work instead of me.
I trust you. I think you would do a great job.
Well, I would. I would apply for that committee, and I would take your place, but I don't have that opportunity because you have done this in a way that's never been done before.
No, that's not true.
This is done everywhere like this.
This is how police transition studies are done. It just is. And you, you say you have 25 years of experience. I'm surprised you don't know that.
I have never dealt with someone like you before.
Oh.
And every committee in Yardley Borough goes through a process.
Up the committees of council.
They go through the outreach committee, they apply, it's advertised.
Not the committees of council, though. I appoint the committees of council. But anyway, we're going to vote on this matter. Do you have anything else about, about this matter?
No.
Any other comments from council?
Dr. Promoter, you're welcome to apply for one of the three openings and be interviewed and have the same opportunity that everyone else would have.
Thank you. And then after the committee's selected, can they vote on a chair? Or is that a done deal?
I'm not part of the committee, so I can't answer that.
The committee does not have any voting authority. We're not allowed to vote on anything, so.
But how does, how does the committee, this split of the different roles for the committee, is that typically decided by the committee or by the council on behalf of the committee?
No, in most municipalities, zero members of the public serve on these committees.
No, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying that this, this pre-divided split of the committee, the shared services assessment, the different people serving on different parts of this, is that typically decided by the committee or by the council who's appointing the committee? How are the roles in the committee decided?
I, I don't think we can compare because, again, a transitional study and a search committee, which this is not part of that, but they're, it's not, they're not formed in municipalities like committees are formed. I follow the process in other committees. So we could do it, I guess we could do whatever we want. We're completely unscripted right now. We're do, we're doing things beyond what any other municipality-
But let's say like the elevation committee, right? We, we put that up, four people voted for it, then it got in.
There's no council members on that, and they have voting authority.
Okay, but how did they decide who is the Chair of that?
They haven't yet.
Okay.
But does she have to follow that order? Because you're just the liaison, right? You're not the Chair of that committee.
So that's, that's not the same as this.
I mean, I understand that, I'm just, I'm just asking.
This is a government committee.
Yeah. Yeah, like, I-
Typically, there's no laypeople-
No.
-on a government committee.
No.
It's the government.
Like, like I-
If you want to be on the committee, you should have to be part of the government.
Well, then we shouldn't have Linda Storopoly on it because she's not an elected official.
And I, and I said to you, I was conflicted on that one, but she does serve with the police force as an administrative assistant, so I thought that was different. And other, and other search committees have had something like that.
Right.
Like a non-police officer who works in the police force. But now we're adding police officers, too. So I did my best.
Just one other thing. You do know that the state can do this review in a much better way. I mean, there are, they come in to look at different things, and you might want to think about that before even going through all the trouble of this. I mean, that, they're much more professional, they know exactly what to do, they will give you numbers. I, I think that's something you should think about, again, before-
Could you clarify when you say the state? Because I-
Well, there's, in, Pennsylvania has more police departments than any other state. So there's grants that are put out, and actually, they will come in and do a, a formal, people who are experts at this, to see about whether you want to do a regional merger, whether it's even feasible, they'll do a cost-effective thing. It's extremely professional. They want it to happen if, you know, so at least you would get a professional review that could be something that then you put together this transition committee, after you have professionals, then you would have real, real data to look at, not data that's made up from, from people who'd never done this before. I did send that information to Manager Johnson with the links because I felt that that would be the way to start, like, you know?
And we did pull six or seven of the reports that the MAP grant has synthesized through that grant, and they were all for regional policing specifically, which I don't think anybody up here wants to consider at all. But we, the committee has those and will say, hey, do we want to do this as a committee? And then take it back to council because we don't, again, have any voting power. But yeah, it's on our radar.
I looked at one of those reports. I was very impressed by how thorough it was and the kinds of, of analysis they did is, I think you have to be, have expertise to create that level of analysis. So it is interesting, worth, if it's only for regional, maybe there are other municipalities that want to join it, if only for the exercise of learning from it. And, and my understanding, by the way-
Should we have to apply for the grant?
As a major supportive, supporter of keeping our own local police here, my understanding is that the best model has been regional policing as far as an alternate because they can pool together the strengths of each part, and that has been the most successful. So it does make sense to me to look at it. If we're looking at things because we want to look at them, so I exclude it.
Yep. All right, so we have a motion on the table, it's been seconded. I think this is our last one tonight.
I have just a clarifying question, sorry. I have just a clarifying question, sorry. When you said we took the timeline off, did we also take off the dissolution date of 12/31/25 for the committee or...
Yeah, the scope and the scope of the committee is what you voted... We voted on already on item B, so there's no date.
Gotcha, so there's not... I just wanted to clarify on that, just to actually hear it. So question on that. So with the membership being the six members, and I understand we're adding members of the public, so it's not all elected people. We do have three people who you'll still perhaps be an elected official, but you might not get reelected.